A very good chilly evening to you all. Welcome to our meeting tonight. If you would rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Colgrove, would you lead us, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I have one change to our agenda tonight, and that is that Pam Gaultieri is meeting with the Car Show folks tomorrow, so we are going to move her visit and comments to February 26th meeting. Does anyone have any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion? It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Recognitions. Who would like to start? Brandy.
Tyler, because it was weird, he wasn't volunteering first, so. Thank you. I would just like to recognize the Good Citizens for January, Henry Haynes, Brenton Douding, and Lilabeth Hawke. I would like to recognize Erin Pazinski. She did a can bud training for our staff, and that's kind of above her call of duty, but she's an expert in it, and so trained the staff on that because they had been interested, so. And then I would also like to thank Taryn and the rest of the admin team for covering when I had to be gone unexpectedly. It's appreciated knowing they were getting things taken care of when I was gone, so I didn't have to worry about it, so, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Brandy. Tyler. Oh, no, sorry. Bryce, Bryce raises hand.
First, I'd like to recognize our student council. They were selected by the state council to be the January Council of the Month, so congratulations to them and all their hard work. Doctor Lee. And then I'd just like to thank the judges that participated today and helped out at today's local FFA speech contest, as well as Ms. Lepin and her team for getting that put on.
I have a question for you. Do you know how much money they raised for the fundraiser auction this weekend, last weekend?
I haven't heard that number, maybe Haley does.
So we raised $3,600 for the auction.
Excellent. Very nice. Thank you. Tyler.
Thank you, I do have a list. I have a couple students that I wanted to recognize for being good leaders and helping others, and so I would just say 7th grader Carter Townsend was recognized when he was playing against Wright for some sportsmanship and helping an opponent out. And then Matthew Carr in our middle school for helping a young guy on the ski slopes the other day just went above and beyond, so I wanted to give those two guys a shout out. I would also recognize Kylie Shoemaker for once again running Random Acts of Kindness Week at the middle school. She does a lot to kind of spread the good vibes, and even when it's negative 10 out, that stuff, that stuff helps. So would recognize her. Would recognize Nate Smith, he is a new pizza delivery boy. We had $11,000 worth of pizzas show up the other day as far as the close-up fundraiser. The Mungers are taking 40-some kids to DC, but Nate, because it happened to be his planning period, jumped in and grabbed a dolly and started unloading pizzas. So again, just going above and beyond. And then I don't think I got this to you guys yet unless you got the week ahead last week, but Mrs. Marty in the math club, once again, had a really good competition in Gillette. Theron Seidner placed 8th overall. Liam Novak placed 4th overall. The team of Liam and Theron and Isabel Parsons and Eden Novak finished 3rd as a team. And they, along with Thomas Hadlock, who also finished high enough, all qualified for the state competition next month. So, and no pressure, but Dr. Colgrove and Mrs. McCormick are going to Casper on Friday for a science bowl competition, so we'll see if we can keep it going. Yeah, anyway, that's it, thank you.
Wonderful. Anyone else have recognitions? All right. Now comes one of our favorite meetings of the entire year, and that is our first grade readers. So we would like to welcome you all to come up. Anyone who wants to take photos while they're reading, just come stand behind us. Afterwards, yeah.
Hi. Nova is here tonight, and she is going to share, "I sang a song to spring." Spring!
I sang a song to spring. My song said, "Grow, daffodils, grow." Spring sang a song back to me. It said, "Tap, tap, tap on my umbrella." My flip-flops sang a song to summer. They said, "Flip-flop, flip-flop." Summer sang a song to me. It was a song of trickling, drips and drops. In the fall, the wind sang a song to me. It said, "Puff, puff, puff." I sang a song to fall. My song was sung by kicking leaves along. A winter wind sang a strong song. It said, "Puff," and it lifted my hat up. I sang a soft song to winter. Winter was resting under a blanket of snow. The end.
Thank you, Nova. Who's next?
Hey, and I have Alex Reed, and she will be reading "Snowman All Year."
I want to build a snowman on freezing winter days, but when the sun is bright and warm, my snowman melts away. There's nothing but a puddle when my snowman disappears. If only he were magic and could stay with me all year. I teach him how to fly a kite high above the trees. Then we would dig for pirate gold or sail the seven seas. I know that he loved to see the tigers at the zoo. And at my birthday party, we would celebrate his gift. We go on all the wildest rides at the amusement park. But best of all would be the fireworks lighting up the dark. On stormy evenings, I would play my favorite games with him. On sunny days, I teach him how to dive and how to swim. On summer evenings in the dark, we chase some fireflies or sleep out in the quiet woods beneath the starry skies. At the beach, we play all day, we get very sandy. We go trick-or-treat on Halloween and bring home lots of candy. Maybe this is magic snow that will not disappear, and this, and this snowman will be the one to stay with me all year.
Thank you, Alex. I bet Laurel's next.
Okay, this is Laurel Lesmeister, and she's going to be reading "The Little Mouse, The Red Ripe Strawberry, and The Big Hungry Bear." Lots of words in that title.
Hello, little mouse, what are you doing? Oh, I see, are you going to pick that red ripe strawberry? But little mouse, haven't you heard about the big hungry bear? Oh, how that bear loves red ripe strawberries. The big hungry bear can smell a red ripe strawberry a mile away. Especially one that has just been picked. Boom, boom, boom! The bear will tromp through the forest on his big hungry feet and sniff, 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 find the strawberry, no matter where it is hidden or who is guarding it or how it is disguised. Pick, there's only one way in the whole wide world to save a red ripe strawberry from the big hungry bear. Cut it in two. Share half with me. And we'll both eat it all up young. Now that's one red ripe strawberry the big hungry bear will never get. The end.
Thank you, Laurel.
This is Aileen Colgrove, and she'll be reading "Pen Pals."
Friend just got a pen pal. His name is Phil. It's time for a friend to write to him. What should she say? "To Phil from Fran, my name is Fran. Here is a photo of me. It is cold where I live. Where do you live?" From Fran, to Phil. Wait, to Fran, from Phil. "This is a photo of me. See, that is me in the sea. Out it is hot where I live." "To Phil from Fran, hot places are all right, but I like cold places the best, and I can play in the snow." "To Fran from Phil, cold places are all right, but I like cold places the best, then I can splash in the water." "To Phil from Fran, I know how to ski on the snow. You cannot ski on water, can you? See, cold places are best. To Fran from Phil and Mom and Dad ski on water. They hold ropes, onto ropes. We all swim in water. You cannot swim on snow." "To Phil from Fran, no, you cannot swim on snow, but I can slide on my sled. It will be fun to ski on water." "To Phil from Fran, wait, to Fran from Phil, I am going to ski on water soon. My Mom and Dad can show me. I would like to ride, I would like to ride a fast sled soon." "To Phil from Fran, it is hot. It is not hard to ride on a sled. If you came here, I would show you my. Mom and Dad said you could come." "To Fran from Phil, well, that will be fun. I would like to ski to see real snow. I will check with my Mom and Dad." "To Phil from Fran, we would have lots of fun, but now I know hot places are fun too. I will love to swim in the sea." "To Fran from Phil, Mom and Dad said yes. My Mom said we all need to chat. Can I call you on the phone?" "To Phil from Fran, yes, call me what fun. We can chat on the phone. We can make plans, Pen Pal." "To Fran from Phil, yes, we can make plans on the phone. We are not just Pen Pals now. We are pals."
You guys did great, thank you so much. This really is one of our favorite things that we ever get to do here, is to listen to you guys read, and I hope you always, always love books. So, stay right there, because we have some things for you. Yes, please stop in the room across the hall for cookies. Are you saying they should leave one? All right, do we have any other visitors' comments this evening? See anything up there? All right, we will move on to action items, the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Pardon? Oh. Yes, okay, so if you guys would amend the consent agenda to do A through C first. Amend your motion, thank you. So, it's been moved and seconded to approve items A through C. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Now on to action item consent agenda D.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Opposed, nay. Now on to action item consent agenda D.
Madam Chair, I'll excuse myself from this.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. We have no old business, so we'll move on to the 2025-26 school calendar. Brad, could you make your recommendation and then?
Sure. So, what I would recommend is basically what they're, we would refer to it as a traditional schedule calendar or the one that is very similar to what we have. I guess we could, if, I think that's the recommendation at this time, and then, then I have some additional notes that I have after that, I believe, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, I have, I have to say, I'm a little confused on the notes that go with that, so.
Let me try to clear it up. So, what, what I think I gathered from the two nights of public comment, along with the series of emails and, and even the, I'm not a Facebook user, but the Facebook pieces that I did see, I think many of you realize that, I don't think it was 20 years ago, but I guess maybe that's right. This topic has been in front of us quite a bit. I still like the idea for, for students and for staff, the idea of the four-and-a-half-day week with the Fridays being that, that half-day. I think one of the things that was loud and clear that we need to address as a district is maybe some flexibility on how those Fridays look, especially when it comes to, to work. And I'm hoping that with the assistance of my team that we could take a look at two, maybe one day a month where it just would be freed up for the staff to, to do the stuff, the, the paperwork stuff, the things that are taking times away from their family, the increased stressors, all those things that may come out of Cheyenne in the next two weeks. And I think we can do that in our current design. I would want to keep some flexibility with, with some of those Fridays because if, if it really is something that comes up with staff development and, and it, and it's something that has to be done, I think we need to hang on to some of those. But I do believe in that current model, there's somewhere between 10, but not more than 15 of those days that, that I think we could be pretty flexible with staff. I'd like to call them professional kinds of things. Because here's the thing that I'm really feeling, and, and I see it in, in Cheyenne right now. Our, our public education is getting, getting kicked in the teeth. Our teachers feel it. And somehow, the only thing that we really are in control of is our amount of time. And I think in that calendar, it could give us some flexibility to, to help staff through some things and still keep the focus on our, on our young people. Does that help clarify some things, Madam Chair?
Yes, thank you. I was just, where I got confused was to have two Fridays each month where staff and student have no school and consider them as wellness days or allow staff to leave on early dismissal Fridays.
I think they're professionals, and I would say that if you want to stay and do your paperwork, you should be able to choose and do your paperwork. If, if you have something that, maybe it's your day where you take your little one and you get to be mom or dad for a day, I think they should be given that discretion to do that as well.
Okay. I just, I need one more little clarification. I'm sorry. Because to me, it's reading, we would either have two Fridays a month where staff and students would have no school, or?
Right, so the devil's in the detail. I wasn't going to get too far out in front of myself until I really knew which direction the board was going to go, because with a four-day week, then, then all of that is for naught.
Right.
Then I have to do some problem solving quickly the other way.
Really?
Madam Chair, so this, we're approving the traditional calendar, but you have not built in the Fridays off, the one or two Fridays off?
No, I need, no, I was not that far down the road because I don't know exactly what the needs are going to be for the amount of staff development that's there. I think it would be fair to ask for, for one or two a month. And, and then there's some discretion built into that. And I would even say maybe even some discretion in between principals and buildings, as we heard, I think, pretty loud and clear at our public meeting.
In December, November, December, and January, where they, Friday falls on a holiday, that would be considered one of the Fridays, correct?
Could be, absolutely.
So I mean, there might be months where there's only, like in November, where you won't get a Friday off because there's, you already get a Friday.
Correct. We actually have some of those currently in our calendar where there's, you know, like a month where you have a lot of Fridays off.
Because I think you talked about that a couple years ago, like a high-activity Friday.
What we've done, high-activity days, and, and I, and I'm glad you said that. I would think that would be one of our focuses, is knowing that people want to go see their children play. That could be one of the priorities. I have some other items on my list that I think we need to take separately because I, I just need some direction from the board first. Because I would tell you, I work for you. I can make anything work, and so can this team. The, the biggest concern I've always had is with that Friday where there's nobody, you know, there's no lunch. And I know that I'm not a daycare center, but I do believe 40-some years ago, I think I did sign on to help take care of kids.
Did you have something, Jason? Anyone else have any comments about this? Suzie?
I like the idea of the two enrichment days. I've been spending a lot of time in Torrington, and that's how they do it. They have two days a month that they do the 8 to noon. I was talking to one mom, actually, today, because I've been quizzing people as I go into every store, gas station, hey, how's it working for you? What do you like? And she said, you know, my son is very bashful, so he falls- Um, gas station, hey, how's it working for you? What do you like? And she said, you know, my son is very bashful, so he falls behind because he won't say anything. So he's able to go in on those days, get the extra help. He's on an IEP. Um, she said he's only had to do it a few times. But they do two enrichment from eight to noon and then two Fridays off. The, the, the teachers. So the teachers have those two Fridays to finish up whatever they're doing the other Friday if they want it, or the, the time off. But I think that's going to get kind of confusing. Just hit and miss, people coming and going.
My recommendation would be the eight to noon would be pretty traditional in, in those days. Just for busing, daycare, routine things. Um, the flexibility I would like to really see is more on that, you know, one o'clock till four, kind of a deal. Um, and I do agree with you. Um, one of the things that I think I did hear quite a bit is we do need to do a better job with our enrichments for kids and our correctives for others. Um, and especially with the idea where, you know, we would lose, um, all of our funding for summer school. And I still think the best way to help any child is, is quickly. Um, you shouldn't wait until there, there's a heck of a wreck before you try to, to get them caught up because we all know in human behavior, if you get so far behind, the, the turn off button is, is a lot closer. And then once you shut down, then that's a different, it's a different struggle.
Did you have anything else, Suzie?
No.
Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first, I would like to say thank you to everybody who voiced their opinions, comments, concerns, whether they were for it against it. It's the second round. I've got to go through this. I've got a lot of emails. I've saved from the first one and this one. Um, it was really interesting to hear all, everybody's input. My one question was, I didn't get to hear your guys' input exactly. So before I comment anymore, I would really, if you guys feel like you want to say something, I would really like to hear your guys' input. I mean, I'm no professional teacher, and I don't act like, I don't want to act like I am. You guys are. So I really would like to hear from you guys, because I don't think I've heard enough from you guys.
I'll go first. Um, you guys heard my staff talk at the meeting last Monday. Um, I feel generally the same as them as far as how it works at the high school. When I first took over this job, I was told how stressed teachers were, um, and that their workload was too much. And so as I see legislation and things that are happening in Cheyenne, um, the reporting that they have to do, the standards, um, adjustments they have to make. I felt like eight to noon on Fridays was a time for them to have on their contract to get the schoolwork done. Because teachers K-12 work extremely hard to do a really good job for our kids. Um, and that's time that they do that on Saturday and Sunday. Um, so those, that's a summary of my thoughts. Um, I think it's also good for kids. We miss a lot of students on Fridays, whether they're regular ed students or student athletes. Um, that's time out of the classroom from our teachers. And so that's time they don't get with them. Um, we have several teachers that coach, and so they're gone on Fridays. And so that's time that our students aren't exposed to the certified teacher of the classroom. And so that can be hard. And there can be reteaching that has to be done. I know that this is not a one size fits all thing, though. Um, we're a K-12 school district, and so it's a very difficult decision. What works at nine twelve maybe doesn't work K-eight. And so I understand that. Whatever you guys do and vote, um, I respect that, and we're going to keep moving forward to do the best we can for kids every day, no matter what day we're here. Thank you.
Thanks, Bryce. Who's next? Sonya?
Um, so when I think about calendars, I, you know, first and foremost, kind of think of what is best for kids. What is the biggest impact on student learning? And I know some of you said that, like, the biggest impact for kids is when they're with a teacher. Um, and, and I totally understand and you know, have been there of classrooms are, are busy places. There's a lot of things on teachers' plates. Um, the best learning happens when you have frequent distributive practice. Meaning if you have smaller chunks of time and can spread that instruction out, you're going to have better retention overall than if you lengthen the time and try to put more into one section. Same, same time overall, if you calculate the numbers out. But I, I do think the best impact for instruction and retention is shorter amount of time over a longer period of time, whatever that looks like. And I, I do feel like whatever the calendar looks like, we're excellent at making a plan to do what's best for kids. So I guess that's one point to consider.
Thank you.
Since it's here, I'll go next. Um, Sonya kind of said some of the things that I would have said. Um, yeah, the challenges that we face at all three buildings are much different. So speaking for the little ones, um, I think they need to be there every day. And I, um, a lot of that is that frequent distributed practice. Kids need to be exposed to it to be able to retain and keep it over time. As far as the enrichment and corrective goes, we have a lot going on at the elementary. We do that every single day, including Friday is a day that we do a lot of the, the corrective stuff already. Um, but with that being said, I'm very confident that our staff will adjust no matter what calendar we go with, so. Um, I say, you guys, the demographics of our building, and I think that speaks a lot to why we need to have those kids there. It's not a matter of, you know, like Brad said, we're not a daycare provider, but we are people there who, who provide a, a safe place. And yeah, the food thing is, is an issue we could probably work out, but some of the stories that I know my staff sent to are, are true, and they happen every single day. Um, and then as far as lengthening the day, I do worry about that for little ones as well. I would almost say a hundred percent of every day, we get at least one kid needing to take a nap. So it's a long day already. If we even increased it a half hour for a little guy, that's a lot. So, but with that being said, we'll make whatever work.
Thank you, Brandy.
Okay, I'll go next. Um, I would echo what both of these have said. Um, I think an IEP brings a different tune to it as well. Those kids have really specific services and have really set minutes of what we think we need to do to really, you know, tighten up that gap or, or whatever. Um, so that would be a little bit tricky scheduling to make sure we're, we're meeting those minutes appropriately and we're getting adequate services and making that meaningful progress. We have kids who come in on Mondays after being in school, Monday through Friday and being gone two days, like Mondays are tough already to build back for the week, and then you move forward Tuesday, you know, through Friday, and then you build back on Monday again. And so adding an extra day in there, I do, I do worry about that. Bringing specific kids in on Fridays, I know that's been brought up. So if we were to provide extended school year on Fridays, what I think that adds is, and I mean, maybe unfair is not the right word, but if special education teachers have to bring kids in on Fridays, but all the other teachers get time to work, when are those special education teachers then going to get time to work? Like, there's just kind of a fine line there of how do we balance that out for, you know, everybody's different responsibilities?
So I have a question, Karen. I'm trying to figure out how to say this the way I, I intended. Are you saying that the, the forty week schedule, a calendar as we provided to everyone would not allow enough time for all the special services for spare kids at the elementary?
Right, so we write, um, IEP is based on a five day week, a thirty-six week school year, right? So we say they get, say a kid gets thirty minutes of reading instruction five times a week for thirty-six weeks or whatever that may be. We usually write it for thirty-two weeks because there's Christmas break and Halloween parties or whatever. But those services are pretty specific, and so there's a total minutes there that have to be given. And sometimes that's minutes in the classroom, like we do a lot of inclusion minutes, but there's a lot of costs, there's a lot of time in the resource room or in the speech room or in the OT room where they're gonna, where they already miss out. And so if you lengthen that, it, it would be tricky. Of course, other districts do it. Other districts, um, smaller ones with smaller caseloads make it look easy. I haven't talked to any bigger districts. Of course, we're going to do right by kids. We're going to get them their services, however that is. We just have, might have some bumps along the way.
And is it fairly common to rewrite an IEP if a calendar changes?
I'd have to ask that question. I haven't asked it, but really you don't build an IEP based on a schedule. And I already tell my staff that, like, we don't write an IEP pace, based on a block schedule. We don't, we don't do that. We write it based on individual skills for kids. So any IUP you see, it's not copy and paste. Like, not every second grader gets thirty minutes of reading, right? So those individualized pieces would be another factor to take into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Couple things. One piece that stuck out over those nights, and I think Brandy's kind of spoke to it, and other, I mean, I'm actually really proud of all the intervention and things that are existing in our district right now.
All they want is to lose the public notice requirement so they can keep even more secrets than they're keeping now. I can't side with local governments in these fights anymore. I used to. For twenty years, I sided with them. I can't. I've got to back the legislature, and I've got to back the Freedom Caucus in sort of breaking the chain and bringing local governments to heel.
And I think that that'll bring the people to hell. While I think the people deserve some, I think that people have become too accommodated to everything. And when you peel back government and local government, you're going to make the people uncomfortable too, but I think it'll make everybody stronger.
And, and hey, if the people can't handle it, they can vote these guys out in two years, right? Uh, that's the thing about the Wyoming Legislature is they can neither help too much too rapidly or hurt too much too rapidly. Wyoming does have good reserve accounts.
And I think Brandy's kind of spoke to it, another, I mean, I'm actually really proud of all the intervention and things that are existing in our district right now. So I would echo everybody, whatever calendar you give us, I think our teachers will do that work. I, and I think they're doing it right now, and they could do it. I get, I, they'll just do it. That's the kind of people that we have. To Joe's point, we've been down this road before, so I guess I would just share personally from me. Um, the last time I think I remember doing this, um, I, I was against any sort of four day week for a lot of the reasons you've already heard. I, I think kids should be in school in general. I'm, I'm with that. I'm, I'm, that's, that hasn't changed. What I find myself more now in year six and having uh, openings and hiring and everything else is I just always feel like I'm playing a dangerous game of when am I not going to get an applicant? Um, when is somebody going to say, uh, I'm tired of this crap and I'm not doing it anymore? And I, and it's, and it's just a, it's a gut feeling. Nobody's, nobody has threatened me either way on a calendar. But the, the, you guys have heard me rant just real briefly on profile of a graduate stuff and ride stuff and standards things, and we're going to look at data later, because that's what we do. And at one of the meetings, somebody said, well, what has changed in education since the eighties? And I mean, good Lord, stuff's changed since I've been a principal, and it's still changing right now. And so, again, I don't envy the decision-making, and I think that, I mean, look, I respect everybody here, and we all have different opinions on it depending on what lens we look at it through. I've been pretty vocal on trying to find, I, I like Brad's, where he's trying to go, I think, of trying to find that perfect compromise solution. I have a building that I think I have, I bet even half or more are relatively indifferent, I think. Now, you guys might have more emails than I do. But the people that I do hear from in my building typically, I hear, they need more time. They need more time that's not on a Saturday or a Sunday or an evening. And so out of respect to that request, that's what I'm trying to find a solution to. And to be very frank, uh, no, I don't think one to three thirty more flexibility is what they need, because to be honest with you, that's what I've tried to do over the past couple of years as, as the stress has increased and check with people. But so I'm a big fan of the phrase, you can have anything you want, but you can't have everything you want. So when I say, okay, my guys are stressed, so I'm going to give them work time. I'm going to try to help them, you know, get this off their plate. Okay, then we're not meeting in grade level PLCs. We're not looking at data. We're not talking about our intervention plan that week, because I just needed to give them some time to breathe. So that's a, a balance I think we all try to figure out in our buildings. And time is the restriction, right? And so what's the perfect solution? I don't know if there is one. But no, I know, I don't think in my perception of my building, you know, just trying to be more flexible with the two hours on a Friday afternoon. I don't know that, that, the people that I hear from are going to feel that. Do, do I think that means that we need to have a hundred and fifty-three student days? No, I don't know that that's the answer either. I mean, that is cutting down a lot of days with kids. I could talk for a long time. I think you understand where I'm at a little bit, I hope, but my, my biggest fear is trying to do right by kids. But I need those adults to do right by kids, so I got to do right by those adults too. And that's kind of the dilemma that I feel like a lot of us are in.
And, uh, thank you. And from what Sonya said, and I know this is not specifically a calendar thing, but it almost sounds to me like we should look at going back to periods every day instead of blocks too.
Madam Chair, I actually have that in my list. And I would agree. Um, and, and remember, I was the village idiot that, that introduced to the block, so, um, I'll take it away.
Thank you. I saw a hand.
Couple things, Madam Chair.
The Biden's recommendation that's here, I guess, has the district chance to look at that features and kind of mull over. As Brad said, kind of a compromise between the both, have we had a chance to look at those and give you a quick feedback on, on that?
Just so you know, I stole the idea. I wasn't the inventor. Um, this was a calendar that actually, I believe, was on the table maybe, I don't know, three, four years ago, somewhere in there. It just came back to, to me trying to, trying to find that balance. Because I think there has to be some gives and takes in what, what we've heard. I really want the, well, here's what I don't want to do. I don't want to tie Sonya's hands in saying you're going to get two days a month when in fact, maybe one month you get three and the next month you get one. Um, what I'm asking for is the flexibility to take that back to the team, let them go back to their staff, and then let them provide the input, because one of the other things I do think we have to do a much better job in, um, regardless of anything, is that corrective and enrichment, because guys, there is a legislative bill today that is still alive that could cost this district as much as a million dollars. That's not a calendar issue. That's going to change a lot of landscape in a lot of hurry. So I do think by doing that, I mean, I think the, the bulk of people right now need to know, are we a four day? Or are we some kind of a modified schedule? And, and where do we go with this? And with my plan, I would like, I would like them to take it back to their staff and seek that input. I think they, they does, they deserve that. Um, and they need to be able to do it without, you know, retaliation or picking sides or, you know, this, this whole dynamic in, in which it has become, which it never needed to be.
Anything else, Jason?
Yeah, but maybe I'm just not understanding this, but with, with those things that you recommend, that has to be, that's what we are sending off to.
Yeah, I, I think what I would suggest would be that the recommend, I think that after the word Friday, where it starts with butts and provisions, that that was more of a discussion item and not because it's item and not because it's not spelled out exactly, that we would want to just recommend or vote on a recommendation.
Maybe this, if we just stay with our traditional schedule as is, so people are coming to work on Friday and then that Friday afternoon is, is more wide open. And if, and if there really is some time, maybe there's an additional green day that we can create that is truly an all-day kids don't show up kind of a deal. Um.
And we are still talking about one fifteen and one thirty dismissals, not, not just here for the day.
Right. Yeah, I, I would like to get lunch in for, for the sake of everybody. Um, and yes, that is. It's important to me.
Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just had one question for Taryn, not to single you out or anything. Um, going to a, I know you said it's gonna be hectic on you, but you'll make it work going to a four-day calendar. What's that gonna do for our Title I status?
That's a Brandy. Yeah.
That's a Brandy question. Um, actually, the Title I status has nothing to do with what calendar we choose, so it's on what services we provide within that given calendar.
And if we did do a four-day week, then would all the, the title reading and math, would they get all their meetings with that?
So Title I services, especially at the elementary school are a little bit different where we're a school-wide program. We can be a little more flexible with how we do that. And so some kids are pulled out. Sometimes we go into classrooms. Um, but there's not like a real set amount of time that we have to do. It's just what the kid needs to be successful. So.
Billy.
Madam Chair, I guess, um, this is probably gonna be one of the questions too, is the Fridays, if we do get one or two Friday off, um, and I know it probably, I, I kind of think I have an idea, but what's it do for the hourly employees, the Fridays that they're off?
Anytime that, um, they're not working, they, they can't be paid. Um, so we'll have to take that in consideration with that as well. Um. And so traditionally, as is right now, um, no one would really go backwards. Um, as long as we, you know, we serve lunch and we dismiss at those times that we currently are dismissing. Now, we have to be really careful with that other variable. Um. But bar some federal things that really could put a wrench into this statement. Um, I think there are some local things that we could do to help take care of, of some staff and some stress.
Okay.
And I would even, I'd even go as far as to call it like a wellness day.
Okay, yeah, cuz I, I'd like to say that. I know that was one of the big things was the the hourly employees making sure they still got the hours and we.
Loud and clear.
Okay.
Yep, that, that's a really important thing. Go ahead, Tyler.
So one, and this is just more of a clarification thing, I suppose, but when we use words like traditional or alternative, like a lot of that in my mind is more for WDE and SBE and that kind of piece. And so sometimes what you guys are talking about is a traditional calendar, like what we've done. And then sometimes you're kind of talking about what would need the alternative process and so.
So in our, in our pocket, the traditional calendar is the five-day early release Friday calendar. The alternative is the, um, four-day week.
And so, but I guess what I'm saying is then every now and then there's a, well, what if we did one or two Fridays off? So again, if you're gonna dip under a hundred and seventy-five student days or under a hundred and eighty-five contract days.
It, they count it by hours though.
But you're still talking about an alternative calendar that would have to go through the process. So even if, let's say we decide we're gonna have kids come a hundred and seventy-four days instead of a hundred and seventy-five and we take one Friday off. You now have an alternative calendar that needs a few more pieces of the puzzle. So that's, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm Mr. Compromise and I'm that, but I just, you really are talking about a couple of different things formally with, with SBE and WDE.
Right, and what we submit this year for them to approve in June would have exactly what we decide we want for next year.
Assuming they're there in June.
Assuming they, assuming we all still exist and they haven't disbanded us all. Jason, did you have one more?
Yeah, I guess that, I guess that was kind of, my question is, is and, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're voting on this calendar, but yet we don't have the what-ifs tied into the calendar.
So the, the what-if here, um.
Because we're saying we're gonna vote for this, but at some point we're gonna possibly add all this other stuff.
Well, the recommendation is for the traditional calendar with early dismissal Friday. And there are some things that we could do with those early dismissal days or, or the gray days. Or is it, now, am I on the right one? Let me make sure. The blue days or gray days, if, if we these guys will look at that and, and that, that will be what we end up submitting to the state board. Now, if you want, if, if we approve traditional five-day early release or a four-day week, we can ask them if they have any changes to bring back to us before we submit it as well. Which is, is.
Well, then I guess, I guess that goes back to my original question is why don't we just table this until, until they go through that and make those corrections so I can physically see it on, on the calendar.
I think I can simplify. There's my recommendation for tonight.
Is that what we have here? Yeah.
Okay.
We just need.
We're trying to do this as quickly as possible so professional development can be scheduled.
But, but I believe this, this will give you the basic concept to move forward with scheduling, correct?
Again, that, but not with Fridays off. I've literally heard verbiage of one or two Fridays a month off and that no diff, I guess, no different than what we do, like next March, we're gonna have students in our building one day. This, this March coming up, because of parent teacher conferences, because of a black PD day and because of a high activity day. But because we're at a hundred and seventy-five days and a hundred and eighty-five contract days, it's a traditional calendar. If you wanted that to happen with some sort of frequency, that's not this, and that's fine, but that's what, I mean, that's what you guys need to understand.
Right, so if, if we do this and we don't ask for any other, any, I mean, some of these things do have to do with uh, what appears on this calendar, some of these extra suggestions, so. That leaves us in a little bit of a pickle, unless you're taking those off the table and just saying this.
Let's go with this. And then I would like administrative discretion to work on what I think can be flexible Fridays, which I still think are contract days. And they will be, they would best meet staff needs. It may be in the building, it may, may not be in the building. Does that work, Madam Chair?
So the flexible time for staff would be after one fifteen or one thirty. Which is pretty much what we do now because some people go to meetings and, and some people stay and work and some.
I would say we're gonna be more flexible than we're current are today. I, I think you've got to, I mean, one of the things they need is time. They're professionals. We give them time. Let them figure out what they need to do.
Paul.
I just, gonna go down a little bit of a rabbit hole here. I'm really glad that we got to have this discussion this year for both sides. I'm an information guy and thank you, Brandy. That helped a lot. Um. Nobody gets into education for money. I mean, we're called to it for whatever reason. Some of us stay in it a lot longer than others, but you're not there because of a paycheck. And anything you can do to help take their stress off because since education has been on my radar thirty-some years ago when I decided to be a teacher, they ask more of teachers and the pay certainly hasn't kept up. And anything else that we do for teachers hasn't kept up, but somehow they still rise to that occasion. And it blows me away that every teacher that will still talk to me told me, I don't care what schedule you give me. We'll work it. We'll make it work. Our administrator just got done telling us that. Thank you. Fantastic. I love that. My biggest problem with this whole decision has been, I don't think we're a daycare. I know we're not a daycare. We're a school. And I don't think it's our responsibility to feed kids. But at the same time, I don't drive by somebody alongside the highway with a blown tire or a wrecked car and not stop. So how can I look myself in the mirror and say, I am in favor of doing something that's gonna leave children behind because I did read your email. I've seen it. Anybody who's been in education for any amount of time has at least one kid that haunts them. I don't know how many you have. God bless you. So at least for me, this one has come down to it's not our responsibility, but guess what? We've accepted it. So in my opinion, I trust you and I trust all of you to make this work. I trust our teachers to be professionals to make it work. So I'm all about voting to give you the sign that we trust you with your discretion and your discretion and teacher's discretion to do what's best for the kids. Because that's the responsibility we all accept it.
Joe.
So, yeah, I just gotta get this out there, how I'm feeling about this. Um, I definitely agree with Paul on this. We are not a daycare, but this is, I got into this for the students and I mean, what are we preparing these kids for? You know, I've gone back and forth and sorry if I get kind of all over the place, but I've gone back and forth on this quite a bit and, uh, the budget thing, which honestly doesn't really amount to much savings going to a four-day, but what are we preparing these kids for? I mean, I know me, when, when I stepped out there, I gotta be ready for a forty-hour work week plus. I mean, a lot of people on this board, um, it's not forty hours a week. I mean, if we give these kids a little bit of lax, you know, I, I listened to a great video by the Girls Duke Coach and she says, "Life never gets easier. You just learn to deal with hard better." I listened to a great video by the Girls Duke Coach and she says, "Life never gets easier. You just learn to deal with hard better." If we're gonna make it easier on them now, that out there is not gonna make it easier on them. Today, days like today, when you're standing out there and it's negative weather, that life does not get easier. I don't see how going to a four-day school week is beneficial to these kids. Now that being said, a lot of these, we have kids that are in this school that they go to school for two days a week and they're gonna succeed. They're driven, they're go-getters. They could pick up anything and go with it. I was not one of those students. I needed the structure. Thank God for what I did after school because it gave me more structure than I could handle. But it also made me who I am today. I just don't see how a four-day school week helps these kids with this structure. I, I'm, I'm sorry, I just don't. Um, the other thing about it is Brad touched on it, what's going on in Cheyenne? I mean, it's kind of hard to vote for anything less right now with everything that's going on in Cheyenne right now. I mean, why are these bills being passed? We're not a hundred percent for sure, but I, I'm afraid to make any changes right now and then have something happen that's gonna make us regret making that change. Um. The other thing on it, and we've heard it, we're, we're starting to beat a dead horse twenty years. I mean, I, I, I think either, is that how, well, you said twenty years, we've been discussing this and, yeah. You know, and we've heard it, it's.
Been a while.
I've got to be a part of, part of this twice, but I mean, I'm sure if you guys have been in education long enough, you're probably tired of hearing that, about it. Pick a road and go down it. Um. Yeah, I, there's just, I don't know, just what are we doing to prepare kids for the next step? That's my biggest thing. I just, I don't see how a four-day does it and, I mean, I, I'd like to stick with the five-day traditional, to be honest with you.
Jason.
Madam Chair, for I think, as long as I've been on this board, um, many, 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 many times we refer to that sign above us that says, what does this do for our kids? But over the years, or lately, over these last fewer years, I think it's unfair that we don't have, how does this help our teachers? What does this do for our teachers? They're a part of this district as well and it's more than just the students. I think it's time that we need to put teachers first as well, so.
Well, I will, I will tell you this. I had a lot of phone calls, emails, messages. Um, I really appreciate everybody who came and spoke and reached out and, and that input is invaluable. Uh, my total leaning toward forty-week was about sixty-five percent and I, I don't know what everybody else's was, but, um. My, one of my concerns is that, um, some folks in Cheyenne are going to make Wyoming's public education system unattractive to teachers. And we know teachers, um, we know applicants, uh, for more than just teaching, I believe, have asked if we have a forty-week. And I think we're gonna get down to a point where it's gonna be even harder to recruit emerging teachers. Um. I'm going to not speak much more about what's going on at the legislature, but, um, I will say I, I think it's time to try a forty-week and, um, that, that's where I am. Um, I think a lot of kids miss uh, miss a lot of time during the week as well. Um, I will tell you this too, and I, I didn't ask permission to share this, so I won't tell you uh, what professional service in town, but I did speak with someone who provides professional services in town who said they would very likely um, stop closing on Fridays and have Fridays available for appointments and things for people, so. I, I think the community will respond well, um, to that, that was a concern of a couple of people I talked to, so. That's where I am. Anyone else? Billy.
I, I'm torn, you know, I can see positives and negatives both sides, um. Like Paul talked about, we respect you guys, we respect Brad. Um. I'm kind of leaning towards a traditional calendar, but also like Jason said, we kind of need to get staff input like Tyler talked about, um, get them involved. We trust you guys to, if we give you a calendar, if you need to work in there, you know, and I hate to say it, but if we gotta go a day or two longer, if that gives them a day or two off a month, you know, just looking at it. September, they get one day off for a holiday, November, three days, December, eight days. This is just school days. Two in January, one in February, one in March, two in April. So I mean, if, if just one or two days here, I think that would help our staff. Just, you know, because they did have a voice. That's what a lot of them talk about. If we don't give them a voice and have them work with it, I, I don't think, to me, that's saying we didn't really care about what they said. And have them work with it, I, I don't think, to me, that's saying we didn't really care about what they said. So I'm kinda leaning towards a traditional calendar, building in a couple wellness days. Like I said, if it's got to extend the calendar a little bit. Or you know, we start a couple of days earlier or whatever. So that's my.
Thank you.
I know we all been hashing this over. And, and you try to figure out what's best for kids. And um. I, I guess as a teacher. We, we know, you know what occupation you're getting yourself into. You, you're there because you love kids, the bottom line. So I, I, I keep running through my head here. Is this good for kids or not? I've, I've talked to. Oh, um, people that are on the board with a four day school week. I've talked to teachers on a four day school week. And then one thing about it is that teachers don't get that day off. They just don't. If, if you care about kids, teachers are gonna be there on Fridays. Because there's programs out there to help kids that need to come in, that, that are, that are failing during the week. I mean, then one teacher told me. If, if your teachers are thinking that they're gonna get every Friday off. Then they're not there for the kids. And, and that's pretty much how he told me. And he told me they're on a four day school week. And he's only had one Friday off this whole year. So they have programs set up to where kids come in. And they get their grades up and it says it's helped down, helped a lot, helped out a lot. When they first started, they said this program. Because what I'm afraid of and, and how the world's kinda going is. People get lazier. And I asked him. I said, so did the teachers get lazier on a four day school week? He said, yes, there was a few that complained because they never got. The Fridays off and, and this and on and on. Well, over time, they weeded themselves out. I mean, it, it, I'm just telling you from what a teacher told me on, on this four day thing. So I'm trying to figure out here what benefits kids. I can see the elementary right now. It's not gonna benefit our elementary. I, I just don't see it. With, with the problems of the kids that we have. So I am more concerned about the kids. And, and, and I do care about our teachers too. I understand that. You, family is very important. But you also have to think the occupation that we took on. I mean, we all have to think that. Another thing too is. I hear a lot, I mean, I'm, I'm probably ramble on and squirrel all over the place, but. Another thing too, I hear a lot about, we're not a daycare. Really, you're right. We're not a daycare. We're more like a childcare. So we pay our staff. We have kids that come to the school and we educate them. So that's not a daycare, but it's more like a childcare. I mean, if you look at the daycare over there. Kids come over there. Staff gets paid, they take care of kids. That's pretty much what we do from K to twelve. I, I don't know how other way you can look at it. And I've heard this a lot. We're not a daycare. Right, we're not, but we are a childcare. Children come to our school and we do take care of them while they're here. And we do educate them too. So you can look at it ever how you want to. Another thing too, had concerns with business owners. Uh, let's see, the bank called me, a couple of other ones called me. They have a few single parents. That work for them. And what they're afraid of is on the days off, what are they gonna do? And, and Dana just brought up that. There are places in town that'll take care of, but what if? That place, that person or somebody there, there don't have enough staff to take care of the kids or somebody's sick. And so we can't take, take care of a kid today, so that parent has to take off of work. There's, there's those issues too. Also too, I had kids talk to me and they're, what they're, some of them are afraid of. Is if we go to this four day school week. There's gonna be. Shorter days for their internship. So I feel the internship's pretty important because most of them get an hour and a half right now. And the businesses that do help kids with the intern, I think I have two right now. And it doesn't seem like they're, they're long enough. You can't teach them enough to really, like one wants to weld and one wants to be a mechanic. He shows up and I get him lined out and the next thing you know, he's gotta go back to school. Well, that hour and a half just blew by. So forty-eight minutes, we're talking. Heck, he might get thirty minutes of, of time on hand, job on training. And I just don't think it's enough. And the way the world's going now with college enrollment, what, down eighteen percent? Brad, that's why Wyoming put out a two million dollar ad before the Super Bowl?
I have no comment on that one. However, um, yes, enrollment. And for your institutions generally is, is in a decline and the incline is traditionally right now in your, your career industries.
So what we're seeing right now is what I'm seeing is a lot of kids aren't wanting to go to college. They're wanting to be welders. They're wanting to be electricians and, and I don't blame them. You go to college, it takes forever to get a college degree paid off. You go be a come a welder, you buy a truck, you buy a welder for a hundred thousand dollars. I know a welder right now in North Dakota is making forty-five thousand dollars a month. So in six months, he's gonna have everything paid off and, and he's already got three hundred and some thousand dollars in the bank. So I can understand kids are wanting to go the other way. I'm just trying to figure out what's best for kids, guys. That's the reason we're here. Is, is this the best thing for kids? Are we taking away from kids? Um, are we, we wanna help our staff? But I can tell you right now, the most important thing to me is the kids. And, and, and that is what we all signed up for and that's why we're all here. Oh, let's see, what else can I rattle?
I will interrupt you really quick to tell you that we did talk about internships at, at the meetings.
Oh, I'm okay.
And uh, talked about making those a two period. Going to more periods a day than they would have a two period internship.
Okay, and, and, and that's good too, but I just talked to a kid that's a junior, it's gonna be a senior. And, and what he said is he's got his schedule all lined out to go to work for electrical company next year. So he's looking at anywhere from three to four hours. And if we double it up, he's only gonna get an hour and a half is how I see it. So guys, that's, that's my.
So believe it or not, I'm a product of the seventies and, and my first four hours of the day, we're in a welding shop. And I think the guy right there, um, it, it's gonna have to align to the student needs, very similar to an IEP. If, if it's really not a college-driven kind of situation, then I think you could look at that. And I think there is flexibility in our graduation requirements, which we are going to have to look at soon. Um, and I think we could make some decisions to even add some flexibility with that as well. Because not all the learning has, has to happen in those four walls. And, and mo- most of it doesn't. And so I think. He knows that, um, we have the flexibility to do just about whatever schedule you have. Um, if there's an internship need, I think you can meet that. I don't think it's a roadblock. I really don't. It hasn't been in a long time anyway.
I'm gonna go peace out.
What's this? Jason.
Um, I guess Madam Chair, you know. And, and all the concerns are valid. Um, but you know, nationwide, you look, and you can't compare a district to another district. Each district has their own individual needs. And, and you truly can't compare a district to another district. But. Nationwide, when you look at this, I mean, I think the last thing I looked at, twenty-eight hundred districts. Are doing a four day calendar. And if it didn't work, I, I haven't seen anything that said schools were shutting down because they switched to a four day. Kids are dying in the street because they switched to a four day. Clearly it's working. You, you see, you see, um, districts actually saying. With their applicants, are you a four day or a five day? So I mean, the, the, the trend has been working to a four day. And, and I'm proud of our teachers to say that they'll make it work, but it's sad that they have to make it work. We, we should be able to come up with something that, that's gonna fit everybody's needs, but obviously we're not going to because each. Each grade level is different. You know, and then the argument of. It seems like every time we've brought this up since I've been on the board, these concerns about, well, what if on these Fridays? Well, I don't hear these same concerns when summer rolls around. We, this board doesn't sit here and say, well, what about the kids Monday through Sunday on the summer times? We don't hear the public saying, well, I have to work and now I don't have, well, you work during the summer and, and you manage to find stuff, so. That's just the hard truth, so I'm. I don't think with, with this schedule and, and. And I like the recommendations, but again, I'm a hands-on guy. I'd like to see it. I think there's a lot of what ifs that we're saying we're gonna. Vote for this calendar, but we're gonna throw all these what ifs and hopefully it works out. I'd like to see something before I vote, so. My vote would be no and, or at least vote for the four day calendar.
Thank you, Suzy. I just wanted to know, I, has anybody taught in a four day school that's here other than, I know Crystal has. And so I was gonna ask her scholastically. What did you see? Because I know you had multiple like thirty-five hundred dollar and five thousand dollar scholarship winners on a four day. So what did you see scholastically? Cause that, that is a big concern. I was gonna ask her scholastically. What did you see? Because I know you had multiple like thirty-five hundred dollar and five thousand dollar scholarship winners on a four day. So what did you see scholastically? Cause that, that is a big concern. So what was your thoughts as an educator? What's your thoughts as an educator? What did you see? Cause I don't know. I'm not a teacher. Yeah, what? Well, I don't know if anybody else has taught before, but I know she has. So I mean, enlightening on what did you see scholastically with those kids? Did you see that they were having difficulty? Was it better? What? Give me an information.
I mean, my kids excelled. My English kids, we, we did great. We had that. Distributive repetition and.
I hear you.
They did great. They did fine.
Did you find it better or worse? I mean, you've taught both ways, so.
So truly, I would tell you way back twenty years ago, some of the schools that really were in favor is. They just got much better at what they were doing in condensed time. They found ways um, to take care of kids. Activity wise, guys, here's what I'm gonna tell you. The state just took over all of the football schedule. And coming soon, the state will probably be taking over a basketball schedule and a volleyball schedule. Those kids are going to go when the schedule allows and we learn.
What state, what, what, what do you mean by this state though?
Uh, the Wyoming Activities Association just took over all of the football schedule. The whole thing, correct, Bo? The whole thing. So RAD doesn't even go to a scheduling meeting and do that. And if we remember this year, we had a game that was supposed to be scheduled. And because of referees got rescheduled. And so varsity sports are going to go. Whenever they need to go because that's, that's, that's important. Although we did hear. And I would go back to, I think what you were asking your daughter, is those districts that do really well, I think with the four day week. Protect the integrity of the day by simply saying, if it's not a varsity sport, you don't leave before two o'clock, period. Now, that does not include, just so everyone stays in their chair, I'm not talking about FBLA, FCCLA. Student Council, because again, those things that are on that calendar over there, they have to happen for kids. Because they're not going to be in competition of the Friday Night Lights because too many kids do too many things. So truly, I think when you look at, um, Mr. Colgrove mentioned it very well, um, in the public meeting. I don't know if you can say, um, I have statistical data that shows a five period day. Is better than a six period day, a four period day is better than a seven period day. Four day week versus a five day week or a modified five. I think really the bottom line is, is when a kid really applies themselves, they get quite a bit out of it. That's hu- that's true of adults. When you really apply yourself, you get a lot out of it. You get a lot of enjoyment out of it. When you don't and you don't really like what you're doing or you don't like your surroundings, you don't feel valued, you don't have friends. It's a tough gig. That's true of the refinery. That's true of Mr. Crabtree's business. I mean, that's, that's true of the sheriff's office, right? And so, you know, we all say that, well, what do we do on that day when we don't have that staff member? It's coming. I mean, there isn't, there isn't a, a, a calling card out there legislatively. That says pack your family up and come to Wyoming because we value public education more than anybody else. It's not there. Now, there's a lot of things I think we offer for young families. I chose to be here because I had a young family. So again, I think we all weigh that, but guys, whether you're on a four day week or a five day week, we are going to find ourselves. Hopefully not real soon, but it's coming soon where we may lose a program because we just simply don't have a staff member. And here's the other thing I'm gonna go back to. If the bill that stays down there right now cuts a million dollars, we're overstaffed. Cause we don't have the money to pay the current staffing patterns. But I think whatever you wanna do, I think you can make it work for anybody. Um, who said earlier that? You know, there's kids, there's one, I'll point at her. She's going to be successful because no matter what calendar it is. She's got a work ethic and she understands um, a lot about empathy in humans. She's gonna be fine. I watch her. I watched her clean up after a wrestling match volunteer wise, guys. And I don't know if you've ever cleaned up after an activity. It is not fun. Um, we pay people to do it. She did it out of the kindness of her heart. That's the kind of kids that we have. Um, I don't know what we're really doing that's broken. If there was some things broken. Um, let, let's address those. Um, but again, I think the calendar that we, we basically have right now. Um, can get us there. I understand where Jason is coming from and, and I, I understand that too because you know. Sometimes we think we're helping teachers grow and, and staff development, there's a fine line about what you're doing for me and what you're doing to me. And sometimes we're doing it to them and we think we're helping them. But at the same time, when you have schools that are in needs of improvement. Our good friends again down south don't give us a lot of flexibility and we all could do better. I, I'm sorry, that was, I took you off the hook. You owe me chocolate cake in the morning.
Billy.
I don't mean to move on, but Brad, can I get your recommendation again minus all that other?
That calendar right there.
So just to prove the traditional five day calendar.
Yeah, just where we are right now and, and that'll work where we're at. And then I'll bring some additional information and then, Madam Chair, after the vote, I do have some other things that I would like to address with the board that I think could help with, with some clarification.
I'll, I'll move to.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the traditional five day calendar with early dismissal on Fridays as we have in our packets and on our Zoom. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Nay. So we have a split vote, so let's do it by hand. Um, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Madam Chair, can I carry all that?
Yes, please.
So, um, one of the things that I think we really do need to, to think about, and, and let me back up. And this is twenty years. And so I, I wanna tell the board, I hope I do not put you in awkward situations. Um, that's never my intent, but I do think that these kinds of discussions have to happen because it's not just me. It's, it's all of us. And, and I mean that i, in a, in a, in a, in a manner that I hope that even if people disagree today, they can make amends and understand that everybody had a voice. Because it's just not a healthy climate when you don't feel you have voice. Please, Jason.
Jason.
Brad, I'm glad you said that because you have a calendar, just a piece of paper that says when teachers and students are supposed to show up and when teachers and students are not supposed to be here. I mean, th, that's pretty cut and dry, but when you start really looking into it, um, I guess one of the things that I liked from all, from all the recommendations that we've gotten as a group and as individuals, either before or after their thoughts, was the empathy of the decisions that we had to make for this calendar. Because generally as a board, our decisions are easy. Pay the bills. We go home. But when decisions like this or the decisions that we have to make, it affects people's lives. For the better for some and for some, it's gonna affect them financially and it's gonna hurt them. So I, so thank you, Brad, for saying that. And, and again, I think the people that sent us comments with the empathy of, of sucks to be you guys, but, but it's nice to have the staff again say, we're still behind you. Whatever, whatever you say, we'll make it work. And, and I can't tell you guys how much that truly means to us, or at least me as a board, whether I agree with it or not, that I know you guys are gonna work your asses off to, to do what's right and make, make whatever work. So thank you.
And I think it's very important right now to really think about where people are financially, um, where they are both physically and mentally. One of the things though, that I, I really hope that we could do a better job with this Fridays is we heard a lot from parents about, you know, that corrective and enrichment piece. And, and I think that is, as, as Susan referred to earlier, I, I, I really do think we could do a better job with that. And yes, we do, we, we do a lot of work, um, but maybe we're not doing the right kind of work. And, and I think that that could, that, that could be something that could be a focus. We heard a lot about, you know, well, Hot Springs County and where they are with their students and, and their achievement and stuff like that. So I think there's some things that maybe we can steal there. The other thing I think we really need to try to do a better job of is, is the idea that, you know, we fight a lot over gym space, but it sounded like there were a lot of clubs that needed space supervision. Um, I think the actual one that was referred to was Dungeons and Dragons. Um, but again, maybe that's that connection piece on that Friday afternoon for an hour or two. That maybe somebody could be a mentor for some kids that maybe don't really care for what we're, we're doing in, in the sports arena. So I think that, that is important. Um, I mentioned this earlier and I, and I would like maybe the board to take this under a discussion item, cause it's not under new business. But I really think as a district, we should come right out and say that unless it's a varsity sport or a high school club, which is dictated by the Activities Association, we don't leave before two, period. I mean, we, we complimented several districts on that they do it. Um, I don't think that's a bad practice. Um, and here's the other thing, I don't know if you have to play five hundred games in middle school.
Oh, and, and I would say, um, with some of the bills that are passing, that there are gonna be fewer referees, there are gonna be fewer coaches, there are gonna be fewer teachers. They are, are, uh, wanting to put people in a spot where they do not feel safe in our buildings. And I think that's unconscionable. They left them, last time I read the bill, unless it's been amended again, they left themselves an out. The only people who don't have an out are school districts. So.
Well, and, and again, it wouldn't, and, and through some of the animosity, you know, we were pitting about, you know, what administrators do and what people do. Guys, I'm here to tell you, if you wanna be a part of a child's life, whether it be a mentoring, whether it be refereeing, um, you name it, we have multiple opportunities for you to get engaged. We just do. Um, and, and you know, here's the other thing where I really worry about where we are and where we are with our legislators, because we say families are stressed, kids are stressed. And, and then the thing I kept on receiving was, but you're running away from kids. You, you're, you're shutting down today and, and you're running away from kids. And it's like, whoa, whoa, that was never the intention. However, it was the perception. And I think our job right now is to be the one that gets the band in the parade and, and really tries to put a, a value back on what is it like to work in a school district where you have an influence of a child? And truly, that's bus driving, that's custodial, that's ma, they're, they're, it, they're all very important. And if you don't believe me, wait till one of them doesn't work that day. So everybody has little eyes watching them. Our job is to do the very best so that those little ones really get to see maybe what it's like to be a, a real community for everybody. And Jason, it is, it's a tough go. It really, and, and it's not gonna get any easier. What's in front of us is not easy. But I think if we all choose to do it together, we can do a lot better job than one person trying to dictate things. Which was not true and that did come from my neighbors to the north. So after the board meeting, since it's your alumni, Mr. Crabtree, you could let them know it was the board's decision, not the superintendent's decision. I'm done.
All right. Anyone have anything else on that topic? If not, we will move to administrator's report. Actually, let's start with Haley. We'll have our student representative report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Hoffman took mine. I was gonna tell you guys that we were council of the month, but. Oh. Yeah, it's okay. Anyways, yeah, we're together on that one. So. Um, but I'm gonna elaborate a little bit on that. One of the board members actually came to our, uh, summit that we held and he kind of just contributed a little bit to that. So it was kind of cool to see that. The next thing I have is we have our blood drive and our goal was to have twenty-one like bags. I don't know the actual technical term and we had twenty-eight, so that was pretty cool to see. And then we're also in the middle of our snow coming week, which is also our Make-A-Wish week. And we're combined with F F A, F C C L A, F B L A, and then the Student Council. And we're having a super Smash Bros tournament at the dance. And all of the proceeds are going to, half are going to Make-A-Wish Wyoming and the other half are going to Owen Dragseth, which is a family from outside of July, I think. And he's on that. I think there's a flyer if you guys wanna read on that.
Yeah, he's the Make-A-Wish student, right?
Yep. And then also at the basketball game, we're doing statistics or, yeah, so fundraising statistics for also the Make-A-Wish. So if anybody else has wants to match Mr. Crabtree over there, he donated some for some stats. But yeah, we appreciate that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Bo, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just, just a few things that we're gonna go on this weekend. We are replacing the speakers in the dome. Right now we have four mids that are blown out. Um, so Saturday, the group will come in, they'll, they'll switch out all six speakers and then get the mics and everything sounding good. So that'll happen Saturday and maybe a little bit Sunday. Um, also have a group coming in to price me out some, uh, some doors in locker rooms. We're gonna put readers on some locker room doors in that area back there, just, just to help with the, the amount of coaches keys that are out. Um, that way we can use our cards and then deactivate our cards. It's a lot easier than switching out a bunch of locks. So, um, I'll get, uh, some quotes on that and see what that's gonna cost. Um, we also, I have a meeting tomorrow. We had quite a bit of, um, oh, phishing emails and why not, these last couple of weeks. Um, and they were, they were bad ones. They, they were in, they were in accounts and they were looking around. So, um, we are gonna go ahead and probably get our multi-factor put in and put an end to all that. I know it'll be a little bit, it'll be a change for some of the teachers, but it's something we have to do. We can't have, we can't have our information in eyes getting in there and looking around. So.
So what is, what is multi-factor?
So essentially, um, one of the companies I'm looking at is Duo.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com and in our weekly email newsletter, Nuke Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
So what is, what is multi-factor?
So essentially, um, one of the companies I'm looking at is Duo. Um, so what you'll do is anytime you log into your computer or Windows, um, you'll either have to have the app on your phone or I can also get little, um, oh, they look like little dog tags almost. And then when you go to sign in, it'll send a code and you'll say, yes, it is me. So essentially what it's doing is it, not only your password checking in, it's also checking it with something on your purse and you're, either your cell phone or your dog tag. Absolutely. Multi-factor. So, and, and we were lucky, our, our insurance for a long time told us we didn't need to do it. We were one of the rare ones. Um, a lot of cybersecurity now make you do the multi-factor. They will not insure you. So it's, it's something that's. Yeah, it, there'll be a learning curve, but it's, it's time. Hey, we can't have that. We can't have that happening. Especially when we're getting hacked and sending phishing emails to different states and W D, it's, it's embarrassing. So we're gonna get that fixed.
Yeah, I got mine.
So no, other than that, that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
I just have one, uh, comment and that is, um, we are behind on agendas on the website.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, when I, when I look on my phone, we are. So I know a couple of times things that I haven't been able to find on my phone.
Madam Chair, I would tell you that, um, for some reason, um, my phone has almost become useless in even trying to send these guys different stuff. Um, I've got to almost rely on a, on a computer. Um, and I don't know what it is, but, um, but yes, we will double check, but there are times where I've had same people, you know, say, you know, it's just not there. The, the meeting for tonight, if that link isn't there, I looked on my phone. But then if you look on the webpage, it, it is there off, off of a computer. So I don't know. I don't know enough about what I just said, but I do know there's a disconnect there.
Anyway, I, that was brought up to me, so.
Yep, we'll take a look.
Thank you.
Well, I think over the years, Brad, we, the board has brought that, that for some reason, it's not on the phone, but when you go to the website, so. Yeah.
Yeah, it does. I, it does not work as well on mobile devices. I will say. So, and a lot of people use those for sure. Angie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have anything unless you have any questions for me.
Do you wanna go back to Mr. Ertman?
You wanna come sit in this chair?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just got a couple of quick ones. Um, in the paper, you'll see we put an ad in there for hauling a hundred tons of sand to do the football field mid-March-ish. Um, it's been on the Facebook page of the newspaper, I think for two weeks now and in the paper, finally, I think it made this week's paper. And I know it was taken off the agenda, but in case I'm not here next week or next two weeks when Pam is here, the guy that's doing the gym floors was here Monday to measure the gyms. He has us blocked for four days. It's been scheduled for three months-ish, two months, three months, whatever it was. He has us blocked for four days, that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. If he cannot get into the school, we do not do the gym floors this year. We have no other option. So, so the reason I'm saying that is the map I just seen for the car thing was blocking off the back parking lot. So if I'm not here in two weeks, he has no way to get to the gyms. He has to have a pickup and a trailer to be able to get to the back gyms.
Okay.
Just so you know, just food for thought.
So, so.
And that's all I have unless anybody has anything else.
Really?
What, did you figure out anything on that slide? Warranty or not?
No warranty. Um, they're still trying to find the, the availability of it. I was hoping I would have that information this week. I should have it next week, I would think. Um, he thought it wouldn't be any more than a week or two, once they found out. So the guy that's going to install it, the guy that's installing the rest of it is not a dealer for this. So he's trying to go through another dealer. Um, so there's a couple of different levels there. He's trying to get through to get the slide to him, so we don't have to pay somebody else to come install it. But hopefully within the next couple of weeks, that's all done.
Great. Anyone else? Thank you, Adam. Tyler B.
Real quick, but just to reiterate, this Friday, Dr. Colgrove, Mrs. McCormick, I think they're taking fifteen, which is the most we've ever taken. Three teams down in Casper, hoping to bring that state title back. And that's all I have.
Um, short one to put on your radar. We met with our Perkins team at the state level. Um, and just to, just give you guys some information about Perkins grants, it's a federal grant. And so when you hear about funding freezes and things like that, it's something that, you know, is, we're unsure of going forward. Um, I haven't heard any specifics regarding Perkins itself, and I think it's a really valuable program. So I think as the Department of Ed at the federal level is getting evaluated, that is something that stays with us. Um, to our district, that's about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars that we get per year. Um, a hundred and eighteen thousand nine thirty-one of that goes to our block grant. And so that's our general fund basically. And that is what helps us overcome a little bit of only being funded based on our school side for six tenths of a C T E teacher. And we have four at the high school. CTE teacher and we have four at the high school. Um, that helps us get us like, you know, wages and benefits into half of another one. And so Perkins is really important, so I hope that's something that sticks around. Um, if, if control of that money is, is given to the state and they're still able to distribute it. In the end, I think that would be the most positive thing, because I think there, there's some red tape there that are. Teachers, when they're spending the money that's set aside for classroom portions. Um, I think we could use more effectively, but just with the regulations of how Perkins is written, we can't always. Um, use it for what they think is best to meet the needs of their classroom. Um, but it's just, it's something that. That I worry about a little bit, um, here and there, because a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars is, that's a lot of money. Um, so it's just something I hope that sticks around and I'll just keep you updated on that as I learn more about. What changes are coming down to us.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for Bryce? Taryn?
Thank you. Oh, just a couple of quick things. Um, we met as a WASIA exec committee today. Um, Mr. Baylor, our new sped director for the state joined us. And I know I've talked about this a lot, but he says the revisions to chapter seven should be out for public comment in March. And we've been hearing that for about two years. So sped directors are pretty excited to see what these red revisions might be and to kind of have some comment on that. Um, we really haven't been a part of that process, so.
What chapter was that?
Chapter seven.
Seven, okay.
Yep. Um, I just wanted to share that Mrs. Davidson and Cindy Pearson, she contracts us with us. She's our job coach. They got to take kids to Riverton yesterday to tour Job Corps. Um, they left at five thirty and didn't get back till about six last night, but, um. So we could go to Shadrin and we have been to Shadrin and there's one in Rapid City. But because of how Job Corps works, you have to attend in your region and our region is Riverton. And so we just thought it was important to take those kids down there. Um, Cindy kind of headed that up and we took some kids down there. We got to see some kids who have graduated from here, so that was cool. Um, they said the cafeteria looked really good. And so I think they had a really great day besides it was, you know, kind of cold on the bus, but. So shout out to them. They did a, they did a nice job organizing that and taking those kids down there. Yep, that's all I have for you guys.
That's a, that's a great facility. I, I toured it when it was. I toured it before it was even completely built and then once it was up running, um, the state board got to.
Yeah, they were impressed.
Yeah, they've come a long way since then too. Um, I do have a question about what's the status of this, uh, skiing competition?
Everybody's registered. Um, the area four director had take, did all of that. Um, I don't have any billing information. She's working with the state. Level on that. I think she, I don't know, the last email I got on Monday was she didn't know how the state wanted the money to flow.
Okay.
So I, that's all I know. They are registered, um, to go next Tuesday to area games and then to want to go to state games. And so. We need to start making plans for that.
Okay, so you'll let us know as soon as.
When I have more information, you will have more information. Yes.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Randy?
Thank you. Um, well, we already got to show off tonight, so I'll make it pretty quick. Um, we did start intramural volleyball. We have twenty-four students participating, so that's a good high number for us for intramural. Um, kindergarten numbers for next year, as of today. We have seventeen signed up for screening and we still have twenty-one possibles on the list that we haven't heard from, so. Still really early, but I'm trying to keep you informed as we go, so. Um, and then I wanted to invite you all to a gallery walk that we're having. We're gonna do it two separate days. February twenty-first and February twenty-eighth, from eight o'clock in the morning to eight twenty-five either day. Um, we're just gonna open the doors so parents and visitors can come in and. The halls are flooded with student work, so they can kind of see what, what everybody's been working on. So. Um, you're welcome to come check it out, but that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Awesome. So we'll, we'll report that, we'll repeat that to make sure those guys heard it. Gallery show at NES, the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth from eight to eight twenty-five AM.
Yes, and we'll be putting out flyers and stuff. We had to air announce some details last night, so we'll get it out this week.
Nice, thank you. Sonia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the majority of what I have really is just, um, a data update, so I won't go over specifics of what the numbers are, but just kind of how to read this. And, and what each of these documents and, um. Data points mean, especially for new board members. So as part of our district assessment system. Um, that is required in statute by the state, we have several different, uh, data points, if you will. One of them is the summative test Y top, which that one's not in here, because we do that one in April. Um, the benchmark assessments that we also use, we give fall, winter, spring. Um, so I do have the first page is that, uh, kind of historical data for Fastbridge. Of course, this is the second year we've used it in middle school, high school. It's the fifth year we've used it in the elementary school for math. And so you can kind of see what those numbers are. If you go across the row, that's the same grade level over different years. So different groups of students, um, is what that, uh, measure or that percent means. Um, and then if you go horizontally, the color coded groups, those are the same groups of students, just different years, basically. Um, the same relative group of students. And I know, um, so that's like the percentage of students who are at or above where, uh. Kind of the expectant rate is with that assessment, they are nationally normed. Um, so. They are compared to a large pool of students across the United States. Because the state is talking so much about growth, um, we use achievement, achievement, achievement all the time. Um, and what about growth? I just wanted to share kind of the growth statistics. We do look at that. When we have data meetings, um, we've done them at the middle school, the high school and the elementary. And so that's what that bottom section is, just how the percentage of students who have grown. Um, at least one point or more on that assessment from the fall to the winter. So from beginning of year to middle of year. Uh, pause a little bit for questions on that one.
Yeah, I would just say, um. Sixth, sixth and seventh grade really had some major growth numbers there. That's pretty impressive.
Yeah, so it is. I mean, it's kind of neat and, you know, it's one test on one day, so I mean, you kind of take that into account too. But yeah, it is, it is kind of exciting and we really try to hit key numbers and are, are we progressing towards kind of those goals? So, so we kind of talk about in teams. So that's the first page. Um, the next four pages really is the third data point that we collect for our district assessment system. And that's our local common assessments. So those are, um. I mean, teachers have full autonomy to make those, use those standards aligned, um, revise those if needed. We can definitely explicitly, you know, we, we can test what we explicitly teach. So that's the benefit of what those are. Um, those are broken up by content area and by building. So you'll see the first page is elementary. Second page is middle school. The last two pages of that particular set of data is for the high school. Um, bless you. So each content is split into not only grade levels, but also what's called like domains within each standard. So just kind of main topics essentially. Um, the different color coding inside of each one is the percent of students who are proficient or advanced. So whether the data was kind of submitted first quarter, second quarter. Um, some have already submitted for third quarter or, uh, just our kind of cutoff timeline. So you can kind of see the percent of students on that, you know, those particular assessments, um, where students kind of fell out. Uh, one caveat to that, uh, if you see, um, you know, two or more scores. In the same kind of column within there, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's the exact same content skill. So for example, if I look at the elementary in math. One domain is numbers and operations in base ten, so that's the third column over. And there's multiple scores in many of those cells for grade levels. One score may be like place value, whether I understand tens, hundreds, ones, that kind of thing. And another score may be addition and subtraction. So they're not a hundred percent like comparable. But they fall within that same domain, if that makes sense. Like they might be exactly the same, but, um. Just, just so you are, are aware of that. Um, so I'm gonna pause just a second for that, if there's any questions on just numbers or how to, how to read those. Those are. Basically our first semester kind of summary of scores that have been submitted.
Yes, Jason.
Yeah, so with that being said, I guess. Obviously, looking at that, I wouldn't have thought that till you said something. For the public, how, how would the public, if they were to look at the data? Is, is there anything in that data that tells them this is, these are, could be some of those changes? Or do they just look at the raw data and say, ooh, that's lower than?
So, um, I think those will be, would be excellent points to ask further clarification. Um, unless we wanted a data spreadsheet with every single specific standard on there. Um, I mean, we, again, we kind of decided on this template just for. Try ease of information at a snapshot. And that's really what it is. It's a snapshot. Cause you're absolutely right, like to dig deeper into specifically what it is, like we have that. All of our assessments are completely aligned to specific standards and we can break that down. So if that's information that, yeah, I was curious about, we have that.
Okay.
But yep, yep, good question.
And I think it's important for people to understand that our, our common, our local common assessments. Are so our teachers get data. On their students, which is, should never be confused with this, this state statewide assessment test. This is, this data is, is our tool. For making decisions here.
Yep, so the benefit of, you know, our local assessments and classroom formative assessments is so we can make instructional decisions. In a very timely manner, right? Gosh, this group of students, kids or this individual's, you know, student needs. To be pushed a little bit more here, you know, they completely get it. We need to challenge them a little more. Or vice versa, they need a little more time before they can understand that. So. This is the data that's most beneficial to making, you know, more immediate instructional decisions. Whereas other ones are more system, I would say, um, reflections and data for that. Um, but we do use like all of those pieces really when we have data meetings and, um, to make. Kind of intervention and enrichment decisions for students too. So. Perfect. Um, the reason I wanted to show you this is while the local common assessment spreadsheet right now includes all content areas. And has scores on all those, um, it's the expectation of the district, uh, which is a district decision. That every, um, grade level or content area gives, uh, assessments at least four times a year. And that every domain is represented at least once. Um, if you look at the second to last page. Because of the change in chapter ten, um, this template will change starting next year. Um, by a little bit. So you won't necessarily be seeing scores for every single content area. Because some of them will not be required for assessment purposes. Um, all ten content standards are still required by statute to teach. Um, but there are some that will not be required to assess on the local assessment system. Like you'll still assess within the classroom, you just won't report it and collect it that way. So if you look at that table that's at the very bottom of what is the chapter ten rules. Anything that is white essentially is not required to be assessed. Anything that is white essentially is not required to be assessed. So for example, if I look at K two, we will still have math scores there. But we may or may not have science or health or PE or fine and performing arts or computer science. Or world languages on the spreadsheet. So you'll really only see math. Now there's three more content areas that are going through. Revision, so my prediction is that ELA gets added to that, um, for K two. Um, and that was just to ease the burden on assessment within the district for teachers. Um, as you can see in the nine twelve band, there's no white. So by that, I mean. So there is that. But just so you know, like the, the template that you'll see when we look at the local common assessment results will be slightly different. Um, moving forward next year, starting next year. So as we transition into that. And the last thing, so the last page, I just wanted, um, to make you aware, in the last week or so. Um, graduation rates came out in, um, the state for the twenty-three, twenty-four cohort. So I just wanted to let you know that I did add that data to the boards in the back. So. That is there for you to look at as well. And that is. Um, yeah. Um, and I, and this, so just note, I mean, like the year, like it gets counted on our school accountability score as a lagged indicator. Because it takes time, you know. For graduation to happen, documents to happen. Um, and I do believe. There's, there's lots of frustrations and concerns within the state and have been of how these are calculated. Um, I think Bryce can talk to this quite a bit. Uh, he studied up on it a lot and how it's calculated. Um, but there are situations of just how the calculations go. If a student leaves us, for example, Bryce can correct me, um, and they are a homeschool student. They, they exit, they start high school somewhere between nine and twelve in Newcastle, Wyoming. And somewhere between that time, they transfer out and decide, I mean, and, and are homeschooled, they are counted as a dropout. So that's not fair to that kid and that's not fair to that family, but that's how the calculations go. So. My hope is that the state really looks at how that's calculated. Um. Yeah, so anyway.
Yeah, I will, I will, I will say this. I, I think that's on purpose. I think. There are some powers that be that want to show public schools are not doing as well as they actually are. And to count homeschoolers who leave a district as a dropout and then to. Tell us that homeschooling and religious schools and charter schools are the be all, end all is incredibly disingenuous. And infuriating. Jason?
Isn't sped part of that too? If they're on sped and they graduate? Well, I thought there was something else besides.
Um, so to, to speak to students on IAPs, um, some of the students on IAPs are on a graduation track. And other students on an IP are on a modified certificate track. Um, and so their IPs are written a little bit differently based on the life skills that they need to be successful. And when students complete all of those goals on their IAPs, they receive a certificate, they walk across the stage. Um, but as far as the state of Wyoming is concerned, they're not a graduate. And so they count as a high school dropout as well technically. Um, I would love to see legislation or something that would change that, because. Um, our educators are working hard to meet the needs of that student on their individualized education program. Um, and the kids are putting in the work to meet that as well. And I think they should be fairly recognized and not counted against school districts, um, across states. So it's not just here, it's everywhere. Um, also, like if a student leaves a high school to go to a virtual program that is out of state. So hypothetically, if, if, uh, a student, um, leaves here and rolls in. Um, James Madison Online High School, that's located somewhere not here. Um, and they get a high school diploma from that institution, they count as a high school dropout. And so that's something we've seen over the last few years too, is kids exploring those out of state virtual options. Instead of the in-state public school versions, um, and we've lost some kids that way.
Like you said, Dan, that it's, it's amazing. What this legislation or whatever allows to be counted as dropouts and. And like you said, you got kids that put in the work, teachers that put in the work and it's according to the state, all for nothing. So I think it's pretty sad and I think very telling what our legislatures really think about. Public education.
And that's all I have, unless you have questions for us, so, for me.
Anyone have questions? And Tyler and Suzie, I I will tell you, if if you want to know more about. Our whole accountability program and our as um all the different kinds of assessments and and all that. Sunny can break that down for you in about twenty thirty minutes where it's really easier to understand. Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yes, and I know I learned a lot going to the uh. Convention down in Casper. That these state assessments um that are shown on the second to last page. It says nine through twelve, but there are only so many assessments per uh student year. So like ninth grade, they would do math and English. And then they'd move the next two to their sophomore year, junior year. Is that what I understood correctly or then am I completely out of line?
Um, no, it's a great question. So it depends on how the standard is written, like what grade band. It might be specific grade level, like ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. In that case, it would be all of those standards within that one grade level would need to be assessed within that particular grade. The grade band often is written as either nine, ten. So um as you know, um, content teams, staff get together and say, okay, between this group of standards. Which goes to ninth, which goes to tenth, how how does that map out pretty well with our courses that we have? Some could happen, you know, twice because giving multiple opportunities is something that is uh like also in statute and encouraged. You know, we do that throughout units. Um, some content areas are written as nine twelve bands. So that same group of standards could be split out between all four grade levels. Divide them up. So it's not every single grade level. You have to do every single one of those standards over and over. Yep.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Son. Mister La Croix. Okay. Board reports. You haven't met. Jason, have you?
No, but I don't know if the last meeting, um, we had two applicants for our director. With the help of uh the Wyoming School Board. And we made an offer to one of them. So I'm assuming our next meeting, we will have our. Confirmation on if she accepted it or not. So other than that, it's just business as usual right now. So.
And hopefully we'll still have funding for both these.
You are correct.
Because it's in danger too. Which includes. Our kids' college courses and all kinds of stuff like that. So, okay. Oh, uh, left will meet next Wednesday for a rate setting meeting. Yep, that's all I had. Um, any other board members have anything to report? All right, future agenda items. Um, Billy, you have one?
Yeah, the F B L A would like to come next meeting, February twenty sixth and talk about C T E and the importance of F B L A. If we can throw them on the.
We would love it.
Madam Chair, would it be fair, could I ask for um just two things that, and that's that the.
Sure.
The idea of the two o'clock, you know, the the sort of the practice protocol of the. Activities and the two o'clock moving forward with a schedule. And then also, I think it's important that we make a decision on a on a seven period day versus a block versus. Some things because um. That I think is going to also help us with some graduation. Um, guidelines and and requirements as as well. Um, and some of this we're probably going to be building in flight, knowing that there could be some decisions in mid-March that. That alter that. But I think it would be nice to have those conversations. So if something then would change, we would be better informed about how that change would affect. Could affect student student learning and staffing patterns.
Okay, so we'll add a discussion about um two P M. or after for activities. And if we need to look at going to a seven or eight period day.
Really, yeah, some more clarification on that, maybe even some things that, I mean, you looked at some data. You know, what are some things that maybe we could get off the table? Um, and some things that we have to keep on the table. Um, because. Um, education is not good at that, you know, we like to add. Um, so I think maybe those are some conversations that now we have a calendar direction that. Maybe we could get a little bit more into the details of, you know, how does it work? Um, what are we doing with different groups of kids? Where are the student needs? Um, and I would even say things like internship. I really think in today's world. We need to take maybe a better opportunity, not not where kids miss the standards. That's not what I'm talking about. But a way that maybe kids can take those standards and then go apply those standards in different ways where they can earn credit. And and then move forward. Um, the two examples that Sean gave earlier about, you know, the welding and and the mechanicking. Those are all things that I would tell you um sometimes are are truly better taught in a barn. Um, they don't have to always be here. And so I think we we could maybe look at some things of that nature. I have some ideas that I'll share with the team and and also with the staff. Because we are talking about a different time for public education and sometimes when you feel you're under attack, maybe what you should do is. Is look in that mirror and make some adjustments, some adjustments to to make sure that those attacks are not valid. Because sometimes we, you know, we can be victims and and that's not healthy either. So maybe it's time to rethink about some things that we do for our young people and. And maybe some things that we could do with them that that would help them more.
And I will say I I did on social media uh invite the Speaker of the House to come here and see teachers teach. So we'll see what happens. Okay. Anyone else have future agenda items or discussion items for now? Jason.
And I guess it's not so much a discussion item. We do have two new board members and I don't know if we already addressed that. They need to take that. Four hour, yeah, so I just, again, I just didn't know. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Brad, on the where you're looking at the two o'clock, I don't know if it's supposed to be on the to tonight's discussion or next week's. Um, like if we're headed to, I don't know, Rollins. And there's a J V and a varsity game. How do you handle that?
So truly, I would call that a varsity competition because. Again, that 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 varsity team is why you're going. You're going to bring your freshman and your J V team. What I I guess what I was more specifically looking at would probably apply more to your middle school. Um, kinds of activities. But but not just them. I think there's some times where we say, well, you know, it it's okay to go. I think sometimes it's okay to say no. I think it's okay to protect the the integrity of the day. I think you could help. Teacher frustration with the idea that maybe kids don't need to be gone that much, even if they're good kids. I hate, I'm not going to put a label on kids, but you know, um, I've always thought that that time. Time is important, but more importantly, it's how you use time.
Anyone else? All right. If we're all done, we're all done. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll call the Eastern West County Railroad.
We need to.
We need to amend.
We need to amend that because. Um, sorry, I it's a. Old business, the car club. Because she's not here.
My mic was on. Um, the reason why I'm not gonna take that off is because I've got a couple of questions for Adam. And I think a few things I think we could still discuss on it.
Okay.
So if that's okay with.
No, absolutely, then. But it, yeah.
I got you. Okay.
Move to approve the correction.
Okay, it's been properly moved and segmented with the amendment of the car club going to discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Agenda's been passed. Uh, any recognitions? See none, we'll move on to visitors' comments. No visitors' comments. Um, action items, you got a consent agenda in front of you. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on consent agenda? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Consent agenda's passed. We now have no old business or new business. Is there anything anybody has for our information? See none. Discussion items, car club autocross. Um, I know we wanted to table this. Because Pam wasn't here, but. I think we're kind of starting to nip at time, so I kind of wanted to talk about it whether she's here or not. We heard Adam talk about access to the gym. Our school's first, so I think. Yeah, I'm not in favor of new map, but definitely up for discussion. Tyler.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, I want to let the board know that I had the uh. Privilege of speaking with Pam and Sandy about the new map and that. Um, the reason, part of the reason uh. Would see will put in the email saying that she was not going to be here tonight is because we're waiting on. Uh, their discussion with the the guys and stuff. Um, I did let her know that was a concern that not only Adam had, but less as a board had. Um, about the pit area shown on the new map. They are going to reconfigure the map and bring a new map with them on the next uh item. So this map is not. The correct map that we have in front of us.
Billy. You mind reaching out to her and asking? Um, the first one we approved was half the parking lot. Um, looking at this one, they could probably reach speeds faster than the forty. I mean, I'd like to look at.
That that was that was another uh concern of my uh. Item I had as well and that and they are going to have uh a better presentation and a better map for us on that.
Okay. Jason.
I guess, and I mean, it is what it is, but I guess just again, this thing is just slowly getting. Bigger and bigger and they're taking more spaces. And so again, I just caution the board.
I guess I don't really understand how everything works, but if there should be a problem. If there's some damage should happen, is there something we can do like a bond?
Yes, I think, I mean, we should be able to write something like that into a a contract, can't we? If there's.
Um, so we have in the past been able to do that. The the problem with me answering that right now, I have not yet seen the paperwork um from the first meeting. So I don't, I don't have any basis. I have no fundamental ground to stand on besides. Um, we have done M O U s in the past that basically say. That, you know, if there are damages and X or Y happen, then. Either they pay for the damages and they fix them or we fix the damage and we send them the bill.
The new store. This is the one stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootleggers liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donut. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
I've done M O U s in the past that basically say that, you know, if there are damages. And X or Y happen, then either they pay for the damages. And they fix them or we fix the damage and we send them the bill. Um, so we we have been through those, but right now I don't, I don't have. I don't know exactly what I'm dealing with here. So um, I think that should be a priority moving forward. That that is spelled out that if there were any damages, that they have to be held responsible for the repairs and the cost of that repair.
And the timeliness of it, I think. Jason.
To go back to what Brad said, yeah, and and that was going to be my question, next question was, have we gotten any of that information that we asked for? And again, we're 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 approving things without without documentation.
Mister Chair, we we didn't approve, we approved it pending the information that they.
Oh, we did. Okay, I I stand corrected. You're correct. You're correct. So, yeah.
I think we're sitting in a good spot. I mean, I think we've shown in good faith that we would like to work with them. But nothing really has been a green light. That's a pun on a car show. But there is not any permission to move forward because everything is still pending. Things that that we need to make those decisions.
Well, and I hope, and I think maybe we need to reiterate that to the club that there there is nothing that's been approved.
Yes, okay.
You know, um, and I, you know, and again. And I understand as as more information comes, things change, but. You know, they they kind of put us on a tight schedule to to make make approvals and then they want to go and change stuff. So.
Adam, do you have anything about this?
I. I disagree with it sitting in in this chair. Um, outside of this. As somebody part of the town, I'm all for helping the town. I think the cart is so far in front of the horse. We were discussing this for. Next summer, I think that's a whole different ballgame. I mean, they're talking here, this happening in four months or whatever it is, five months. That's a lot of moving parts for something we've never seen or have nothing in writing. Based off their map, and I totally plan on being here next meeting. But based off their map. I don't feel comfortable having a contractor, if that if they do happen to be back there, having a contractor drive through their pits. Nor do I think he should have to drive through a race car pit to be able to do his job. He said he would, he would try to work it out, but he has to have access to the back doors with a big trailer. Or he does not do it and there's no moving him. It's if he, we don't get him those four days. He is booked the entire summer because all the schools are trying to get all their gyms done at the same time. Supposedly they're going to move their map. I mean, the end of the day, it's up to you guys. You guys tell Brad what to do. I do whatever Brad tells me to do. But me sitting in this chair, I think it is a horrible idea. I think. I think you're, we are putting taxpayer monies. At work to make private individuals money is my honest opinion. There's. You got all these vendors, you got everything else going to be making money off taxpayer money that we. As taxpayers have paid for the parking. Off taxpayer money that we, as taxpayers have paid for the parking lots and the. And everything else, and private individuals are gonna make money off it. That is my, that is my two cents worth on it, but I will do whatever Brad tells me to do.
Thank you, Billy?
Mr. Chair, is, does anyone know, I mean, I'm talking, I guess, to Sean and Tyler, they probably know more. This setup, is this just for one day only, or is this gonna be for the entire? Show?
Yeah, it's just a one day.
And that was a, was it a Friday?
Friday, Friday.
Friday.
I believe they would probably be setting up on Thursday.
Yes.
Um, but the big deal would be Friday, I've also heard that they're moving. Don't know that any truth to it, but that they're moving the drag strip out to the airport because of. The refinery? Uh. They discussed part of that with me, um. I plan on going to their next board meeting, so I'll be there with Sean to kinda hear all this, um. Yeah, nothing is set in stone as far as where they're gonna do the drag. Uh, there was even talks about shutting down six, uh, the bypass sixteen between. Down here. They've talked to the state about it, I have no idea, these are just ideas that they have thrown. And that, I'm. Just as confused as you, um, I did just reiterate the concerns that you had at the last meeting. With the, having the access behind the egg building to the stand, grandstands, to the weight room. Being completely. No go. For, and when I, especially where we've seen this new map. So they were going to work with it from what I talked to them, uh, this morning about. And see about. Taking the pit area from this map and moving it to where the public parking is and making public move elsewhere. But, like I said, this is all hearsay, let them come to the next meeting, explain the new map. All the details. The devil is in the details, let them explain it. And we'll go from there, but the way it sits right now with this map, no, I'm a no.
Adam, question for you, if they were to move the autocross and be able to ax, and you still be able to access the back, if they moved it. The autocross to the football parking lot? Would that be any more appealing to you?
Sure. My biggest thing is what? How does it play out, I mean, if we do a bond or whatever? But if something gets tore up. If, right now a window, if we break a window in the school, it's about twenty thousand dollars for the window itself. And it's ten to twelve weeks lead time to get the window. And then I gotta get, you gotta have special, all of our windows in the school are Pella windows. Only Pella installers can install Pella windows. Me and you can't install a Pella window, Pella will not allow that. Um, so then we gotta get a contractor lined up for that same time. So you do this mid-July, you're well into school before the window ever shows up. You might be well into fall, now I'm not gonna say they're gonna break a window, but I'm not gonna say they won't. Tire flies off and goes through the doors of the commons. Who's responsible for it, who's gonna, how are you gonna fix it, I mean, there's a lot of. To me, we're putting a lot of risk, and that's what they kept telling. Um, Brad and I went to their meeting before the first board meeting, and that's what they kept telling us is, everybody's risking something, and I don't mind risking. If there's reward, I don't understand what the reward for the school is, I don't, we. Do more for the community, this place is more a rec center ninety percent of the time than it is a school, um. That building is full of people all the time. Not affiliated with the school, different basketball groups and whatever else, um. So they wanna say everybody has to risk, I don't mind risking, but I don't, I don't see the reward at the end of the day for the, for the school, for the town, absolutely. There's potentially a reward there for the town as a whole. But that doesn't fix the school.
Yeah.
I would say as far as the parking lot goes. Um, but the football field parking lot, that is not as level.
No.
Um, and I don't know what they, I, I don't think they would, I don't think they would. That, that drainage through the football parking lot is, is.
I mean, my other thought is, is we have a home football game. What's a big crowd, two hundred people, is a, that, that parking lot's full, so is this parking lot, they're talking thousands of people, now you're gonna plug. I don't, where are you gonna park cars, I don't understand what they're thinking, I don't. Uh, there's no public parking here, um. Especially if you take away an entire parking lot. There's nowhere in town you're gonna park that many people, um. I, I, there's a lot of logistics I don't think have been thought about or worked out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just, I just wanna say, you know, we're, we're here twelve months out of the year, a lot of us are working, and my concern is. People maybe, well, where are we gonna park and that, but people go home for lunch. You know, how many people are gonna try to get in the buildings for whatever reason, use the restrooms now, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm for it, but it kinda. Sound like we're not here, we're here, so.
I was just curious, has anybody said if they ask the people that live on the street if they're cool with them shutting it off yet? Has anybody heard? Cause that was the one question I wanted to ask last time and somebody beat me to it, so I just didn't know if it ever got asked or not.
Tyler.
God, I feel, Sean, I think you and I need to switch your, I think you and I need to switch jobs here. Apparently I have more information, um. Sandy and Pam did, uh. Talked to the members on. Street over here, here, forgot where I was, um. Everyone on that street was okay with the event, they all have back access, uh, through the alley. Uh, to get out of their housing for that day. Um, with that being said, I think it is. The second or middle house there, there's a. Elderly lady there that they would allow access in and out of that street. For the day. Is what I was told today.
Hmm, okay. Jason?
And I guess that, that brought up a good point, um, I guess, I never thought about you guys. Utilizing that parking lot all year long. And, I guess. That.
Call that a wellness Friday.
A wellness Friday.
But two, I guess, as a district, I think, have, have. I don't, obviously, sitting here, we haven't discussed it, but maybe behind closed doors. Have we discussed closing off some areas so we don't have people parking in the grass back behind us and out in the fields and, I mean. Cause, cause like you said, I mean, I. If they're talking as many people as they're talking about, there's no way we're gonna accommodate. Any, any amount of parking, so I guess as a district. What, what are we going to allow people to park and not park, middle school side, I mean, so I guess that's something I'd ask us is. I would like to throw that on a discussion. To, to have that discussion.
Okay.
I do have a staff development plan for that, or an idea that is on mine, but. Um, I, I do think that one of the things that we could seriously look at. And we don't do a very good job of this, is, is maybe. Um, sort of a kickoff of like a strength coach to come in on that Friday, we would go to the elementary school, we'd get like a pinnacle bank. You know, kind of a grill and, and we'd sort of do the celebration with the twelve month employees. Um, but focused around a staff development kind of a theme, but I think if you stay on, on that side of the town. I think it would be a lot easier and more successful than trying to weave. You know, through, through people. Um, and especially when, you know, if you had to run home and, and let the dog out, or if you had to go to lunch. Um, because you didn't like hamburgers and hot dogs, um, I think if you're on that end, as long as you don't have to come back to this. I think it would just be a lot better just to stay clear, um, you know, those that don't like Sturgis, don't go to Sturgis during the bike rally.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Um. The others, one of the other questions to ask them, I think, is how exactly are they going to control? This street and alley. For the residents, cause they're gonna have to barricade that off. And man it and let residents in and out, or it will be parked full. Plus they'll be wanting to park on. So that, I would add that to the question. That's true.
Okay.
So I also would have concern to go in.
I also have concerns, I would. I'm going to leave the sprinklers on because if not, they're gonna be trying to camp in the football field. But bef, those sprinklers come on, the football field is watered during the day. Everything else is watered at night. During the day. If that many people show up, there will be people setting tents up because there's nowhere else to stay on the lawns. How does that work, who's responsible, I'm not coming and kicking people off the lawns, um, it's not.
No.
I will not do it. Um, but. So we will start to have that gate open.
Yeah, but. The security was just for the beer garden, wasn't it? It's only security for everything.
So, so just so you guys know, we, we sort of experienced a little bit of this periodically with the bike rally. Um, and it's not uncommon where we do have to ask law enforcement to come and have. You know, the toy hauler, um, moved from an elementary parking lot or the football field. Um, we haven't had the tent issue for a while, um, but again, we usually just turn that over to law enforcement because. Um, you know, it is, it is public property, but it's still private and we do have the right to tell people to, to leave.
Red ball.
To me, none of this is what we agreed to originally, so I feel like we're just back to starting. Point of bring us your proposal and we'll say yes or no, because this is not what I agreed to. I mean, it was kinda, kinda one of those deals that the previous map, I thought they could maybe make it work, but this to me is just a nightmare. I mean, not that the other one was great, but this one is just. It's got catastrophe written all over it as far as I can see, so. I'm gonna say we should just. Start over with them at the next meeting and if they can, well, our fear is great, if not. Tell them good luck with the airport, I guess, I don't know, cause this is just. I don't know.
John?
The only thing I see on this that's changed is they added more on the, on the parking lot. And then they added there in the, right in the autocross area from what they, from what I understand, and then right back here. And, I was on the phone telling them. Do not put this in there from the football field back, because you and I already talked. And then I see this, you're right, that was not on the first agreement and I told them that. So the autocross thing here. I, I guess, I, I'm not fully understanding that too, so, but another thing too is the parking lot. To benefit the school, why can't we set up something to charge people ten dollars a car? So everything else on here, we all knew about. Everything except for the pit area and for, and size of the track, that's the only two things that I see. They told where the vending area was gonna be, the bleachers were gonna be, and blocking off the school and the parking lot. And the beer garden, now. The, the only other thing too is one thing you guys have to remember. Is, you're gonna be taken away from our kids because our kids have first. Um. Dibs on the vending area.
Well. That was part of the agreement, and they waived the fee.
Right, right, and from what I understand, the. The fee was gonna be waived, so, this is what, I'm, I'm just estimating guys. Whatever our kids FBLA, FFA, whatever they set up. They could be looking anywhere, I'm just going on rough numbers, between two to four thousand dollars. Is to help our school. Now, to help the cost, what you're worried about. And this is just an idea, I'm just throwing some stuff out there. I don't know why when people come in, we can't charge them ten. Dollars for parking, I don't know how many parking fees are, I mean, over there, let's say there's. I don't know. Three hundred, so if you charge ten, that's three grand. So. They may not cover everything, let's say nothing got tore up. Let's say nothing got tore up on the school, we could take that three thousand dollars, five thousand dollars and put it towards the school. I mean, Bo would like to put it towards these lights and the football field, but anyway, I'm just thinking of school.
Yes, Billy.
I, I hundred percent agree with Sean, I mean, we, our. Our FBLA, our FCCLA, FHA, or FFA, they could also man this parking lot and charge the people five or ten bucks and then we'll split the profit with them. You know, if they're manning at the gate, who they're letting in and who they're out, getting them little parking tags per se or whatever for the day. And then just split the profit with them, that, I mean, that'd be another fundraiser for them. Cause ultimately, I mean, if they're gonna park here. Um, you know, and you could just have, maybe leave that. With the entrance, you could leave that open for anybody, you know, or whatever, if you need in there for the gym. Or the weight room.
We would come to the back.
Okay, so I mean, yeah, they could have that whole parking lot. It's already gated off, you could have the students sitting right there taking money for parking. You know, a daily parking fee.
Okay, Adam, you had your hand up for, sorry Sean, I'll get to you.
The only other thing I would say that they did change. On there is the size, and so we were told forty mile an hour, let's top end, you're talking, them cars are gonna get movement in that parking lot.
You just brought that up, you're right, it was half, and, and that was one change that they made. And also two, back there in the pit area, that, that was added too, yeah, and those two things, I, I see that. They, what's been added, I understand that, also two, they're gonna go right back to security. Lynn Busco is, as far as I know, is gonna be head of security. So I know Lynn. Saying that, also two, they're gonna go right back to security. Lynn Busco is, as far as I know, is gonna be head of security. So I know Lynn right now, last I knew, he's got. The volunteers all over, I, I couldn't give you a number, but he's got quite a few. So Lynn is doing security pretty much on, on this and the drag race. So, he's, um, setting everything up, he's gonna have a plan, as far as I know. Here in the next month or so, to, uh, for security for all these parks.
So how does it work? Lynn being a civilian, no different than me and you, somebody set up here in a tent or drives up on the lawn. Lynn goes, tells them to move, he has no authority, he's not a cop, they can tell him, no, what are you gonna do to me, what, I mean, is he gonna be? Deputized for the day? I mean, what, what stops somebody, I guess, from telling me or you, no, we're not moving?
Well, it's kinda like a rock concert. I mean, if you really think about it, it's kinda like a rock concert, I mean, you got security right there.
You give so many, somebody so many beers and bouncer getting the bites all the time at the rock concerts is. I mean.
Yeah, it's gotta happen, it's gotta happen, I mean, we're gonna hire that guy right over there and he's gonna be head, head bouncer.
Bose bouncing, I like that. I'm just trying, I'm just playing the devil.
No, I understand what you're saying, right.
The end day, my job is still to maintain the schools and be ready to go to school, um, like I said, sitting in this chair. I think it's a horrible idea, you put me out there in the parking lot and drink a beer with everybody else? I think it's a great idea for the town and the kids and everything else that goes with it, but sitting in this chair. I think there's a lot of risk, um.
There's, there's a lot of risk, but there's a lot of risk in life, there's a lot of risk in business, there's a lot of risk every day we go outside of these, outside of these walls.
But there's some risk you don't have to take and we're.
You're absolutely right, but. One thing also too, you gotta think about, are we gonna help? Are we, we were trying to help the community, we're trying to help kids.
And that is, like I said, that is a hundred percent up to you.
And granted, I'm listening to everything you guys are saying, I understand, there's a lot of ifs, and we just talked about a lot of ifs. We don't know what's gonna happen after this first, first go around. After, you're right, we hope everything goes flawless. But you, like you said, nothing always goes flawless, there's always gonna be glitches. You know, either we're gonna give it a chance or not, I mean, there's other places that would like to have this in their community. Um, Upton's one of it, one of them. So Newcastle has the first opportunity, so I'm just, just, just throwing that out there, so, um, anyway, go.
Um.
I guess Brad, what is the, what is gonna be the district's policy? As you know, anytime, day or night, weekend, holidays. There's some student car, cars left overnight in that parking lot. Is it the districts? Is it gonna be the district's proposal to have those cars towed so this place can come in?
That would be the last resort. And so. Traditionally, when we run into this is when we either go to repave, restripe or wash. Once in a while, he would like to do it with snow removal. It doesn't work very well. But usually what we do is we work with the owner. And we have had to have some of them towed. In the last thirty years, probably a handful. But most of the time they'll come down, we help assist them to tow them away. A ye, they hook them to another vehicle and somebody drives and somebody gets them out of here. You know, our school vehicles will be real easy. I mean, we'll take the Suburbans and and move them accordingly. Probably to the elementary school. But I don't think that's, that, that's, that, that's not going to be a big challenge. I've worked with Eric, Eric Kriegel over the years and he's, you know, he's sort of a MacGyver and he can. He he has a lot of ways of making things happen and and actually he, he, the, the one that he actually come and got was. Didn't have an owner and I think he became the owner of it. So I'm not sure how that all happens, but he was more than happy to come and. Put it on the back of his truck and take it away.
And then again, I I'd just like to reiterate that, you know, I'd like us to kind of discuss. Some of these off limit areas. So Adam has an idea, you know, that the back gravel road that travels around. Again, you know, people are gonna find ways to. Get their vehicles wherever. So I think Adam needs a, a, a clear understanding of. Of the areas that we as a district are saying, we do not want people back there.
Absolutely.
I would say I think we've brought up a lot of really good questions. For her, will you be able to get those to her so she can answer those when she comes next time?
I'm, I'm just so everybody knows, as of right now, I've got um. Oh, what number? Where did I put one at? Okay, so we're concerned about blocking off access. Or security for our school and how they plan to do that. Curious about the public streets here, especially this one to the south of us. We want a new proposal. From them and then um access to the gyms and then why the change in the map?
And can we throw in there that maybe charge for that public parking for our student groups? Well, and we'll just have the understanding, student groups that. If we can do that, half will go to them and then half goes, is that something we can do?
I believe we have options. I don't know exactly what they have access. Um to do, but. When we met with them, we were talking about, you know, like those concrete dividers that they had up here on the bridge forever. That some of those would be really nice in certain areas. And then I think, you know, when you're really talking about grassy areas. It really doesn't do you a lot of good to put up the caution tape. That's not a great deterrent. But I think the expectation would be with their event staff. That nobody is on the grass and if they are on the grass, we need like a license plate number. So like if they break a sprinkler head or whatever. Then we send them the bill. But then they just simply remove them, just like a rock concert. I mean, you know, if you misbehave at a rock concert. Eventually, somebody bigger than you comes and grabs you and and the music stops.
So what, I guess, I guess what I was asking Brad though is that public parking? If we just had the student groups, the FBLA, whatever, manning that, charging. If they get ten bucks a car, if they keep, five goes to all the clubs, five can go to the school. I mean, is that something we can propose to them?
I think we can propose.
I mean, I think that'd be a good fundraiser.
You know, the, here, here's your biggest problem though with paid parking is, and it's not a bad idea. I'm just saying that what, what people traditionally do is you'll park at Maverick and you just walk up. Or you'll park on stampede and come across. That's okay.
That also might be true of some.
You know, without being through it the first time, I, I don't know. I don't, I mean. I, I, I've been told there's a difference between the Corvette people and the Mustang people and the Jeep people and the bike rally people. I'm sure there's some truth in that. I just don't know what that means. And I don't know what this particular group. You know, are they well behaved? Are they not well behaved? Are they medium behaved? I don't know. But truly in that diagram. I have, I have high school kids that probably could exceed the speed of light in that kind of zone. Because there is no way and I mean. That, that was, I just don't think that's very realistic. And truly to do an event like that, I could see you doing that on year three, four, five. You know, where the obstacle course became the conversation where you and I were going to, you know. Be challenging each other, but that kind of a thing is gonna be a special. I mean, that, that's, that's a special kind of a platform. Not saying it's not cool, it's just that's not ever gonna be a design of a high school parking lot.
It opens up absolutely all of our buildings where before it was just a couple, kind of. And now it's from the pool to the egg shop and everything in between.
Nice if you could take maybe that public parking to make that your pit area and just leave from that entrance on up. For your access. Just having a public park and making parking streets.
I sort of thought their first plan with a limited space would really limit your speed and and really was a better idea than this. And it didn't. And let's face it, I think that first plan. Addressed a lot more of our concerns because this one has presented more concerns than the first one. We've actually added to our problem instead of simplified.
First of all, there's a lot more buffer between.
And as far as charging for parking the kids and that, I'd still like to just check with the insurance company, make sure the school wouldn't be liable. Just because they're being.
We're charging now.
I used to work for motocross and. We had to have them sign waivers so that we weren't held liable for anything.
Yeah, and then you made that your pit area might deter a lot of just plain chains coming in with their vehicle and parking on the grass. Maybe just in that pit area and nothing else.
You know, though, when you're talking seven thousand people, you're almost gonna have to work with Troy and some busing because you're gonna have to have some remote. Parking and shuttle people too. Cause that's a, that's, that is, I mean. So yes, so um we've done this in the past. Could be training. But they, they usually pay the driver an hour, but that, that rate of pay. Comes from the, the actual company that's putting on the, the venue, no different than if. Years ago, baseball used to lease buses to, to take baseball teams around. But that was all separate. It does not count towards any kind of. Um reimbursable, reimbursable transportation for students or anything like that, but I would think that many people, Adam's right. I, I mean, cool idea, but holy smokes, the, the inner working of this thing and how you get people from A to B. Gonna be, it's gonna be a full day's work.
Has anybody got anything else on this? Okay, so I'm gonna go over this. What I'm gonna ask Pam again is access to the gym. For redoing the floors, plan to restrict from going anywhere they shouldn't go. Um, we would like to see a new proposal if they're gonna be changing stuff. Probably just need to redo that. Got questions about the public street back here? Can we charge for public parking or the pit? And also get vending for free for students? I, I put Jersey barriers on here if they provide Jersey barriers. And then use for buses to shuttle and see if we could charge for that.
You know, the other thing we really do need fairly quickly, cause this is a time consuming thing. Is whatever paperwork they would like our insurance people to look at, we can't be doing that July first.
And we're not gonna improve without it.
I mean, I think. I, I, I wouldn't think that's a bad idea because, I mean, we're going on two weeks. From just a verbal notice. I would think March. March, March twenty fourth. Yeah, by March, yeah, March, yeah, March twenty fourth would work, but without that, it's really tough for us to make any kind of. Realist, I mean, we're just all sort of thinking outside of the box and without that kind of guidance, we really don't know. And, and Angie's not gonna get an answer. If you send it in at eight that morning, you're not gonna have an answer by noon that day.
There's something we should do at the first meeting in March and then have a decision.
I, I, I don't know what their terms are, but I would think there's gotta be something. If they do this already. It shouldn't be that tough.
Yeah, you think they'd have it put together.
Or it's a guy thing and.
Yeah, you think we would have, but and I'll just tell you guys right now, it came to us so quick. And, and we've only been on this for about two months. So we're scrambling as fast as we can and the deal is right now, applicants that we're trying to figure out. We bringing in three hundred cars, we bringing in five hundred cars. So the seven thousand people that came to Sturgis, you were looking anywhere for a thousand, twelve hundred cars. So we're looking at maybe two to three thousand people showing up on this deal. So, I mean, over the years, it's gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger. So that's why we're trying to get everything set up, guys. We're, we're scrambling just as fast as. As we're trying to find a venue, we're trying to do this, we're trying to do that. Planning is crazy right now. It got thrown in our laps from Sturgis and we're trying to run with it. We're trying to do something for the community. If, if the community don't want it, there's other places that want it. So, I mean, it's just kinda where we're at with it, so.
But the issue Sean is it, it's not whether the community wants it, it's, it's, it's the school's responsibility to make it work. Because it's, it's, it's our facilities that they're, that they're asking for, you know, and, and like Adam said, I think. And you said it too, all this scrambling, it's such short notice with very little time to do anything. Typically leads to mistakes being made and things costing in the end, so I, I. I, I think.
And you learn from your mistakes. So here's one thing about it. Do we want Gillette to have it? Do we want Upton to have it? Or do we want Newcastle to have it? That's the bottom line. That's where we're at.
I don't care who has it. I'd say, I think it, this was poor planning and it, it's, it's left up to. Well, if you guys, the district, don't allow us to do this, then look at you not giving this to the community. That's how I took it. Well, that, that's exactly what, uh, what's her name said, not Pam, the other gal.
Sandra.
So, so again, it's, it's what are you guys gonna do to make this work? Oh, by the way. We're, we're gonna change up everything that, that we presented to you.
I mean, I kinda hear what you're saying, Jason, but if it's not feasible and then we tell them it's not feasible.
We don't do.
No one's gonna get mad at us. I mean. I, I mean, they'll understand, I mean.
Well, but, but, and again, nothing against you, Sean, but to say, well, then Upton or Gillette will get it. Well, the, again, that's not my problem.
You're right, it ain't your problem and that's part of what Newcastle's problem is. They don't ever let anything in, bottom line.
There's a difference between adding stuff in. And, and. Doing stuff by the seat of our pants at the last minute, when, when it affects. School district property.
Well, if you got a problem with it, vote no.
I did, eh?
Okay, right. That, that sounds like we're all gonna vote no on it.
No, let's. We're gonna keep discussing it, but. Dana, go ahead.
I think we need to remember that we're sitting here as the recreation board as well. And so community recreation. Is, is, is part of. Eastern, Western County Recreation Board's job. So. I, I think. We'll either figure it out in a way that makes everybody comfortable or we won't, but they, they will know. Exactly what our concerns are and can answer those all for us next time.
There's some.
I'll look at these questions to Pam as soon as I can. And then I'm trying to set a hard date time for March twelfth. I'm gonna set a hard date time for March twelfth. On, you know, on our questions to get information back to us. So, yep.
Good deal.
Okay, is there any other discussion on it?
Tyler.
I would just like to add to uh your questions. To. Not necessarily hear from Pam and Sandy about this, but to hear from the guy that's actually putting it on. If he could zoom in, if he can't be here to talk about it for the whole board, that way if none of us, or some of us can't make. Uh, their meeting to discuss with him, he can, it'd be straight from the horse's mouth.
That is a good idea.
Right. No, th- this was a good discussion. And I get, we're all passionate about this, but I am. I mean, who cares if, if we get a little, raise our voices a little bit. Honestly, this is a good discussion. It is good for Newcastle. Adam's got an excellent point because if we have to repair that parking lot. And we've gotta go to the state for money, they're gonna laugh at us. But Sean, you're absolutely right. We do need to try to start doing something for this town. And if we can help out in any way. As long as we're not taking all the risk with no reward, understandable. So. That is all I've got. So. Meeting adjourned.